All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a special meeting, study session. Today's Monday, July 31st. And if I can have a roll call, please? It's good. It's working. It's working. Okay. Rope, please.
Mr. Chris Simpson?
Here.
Mr. Michelle?
Here.
President?
Present. Vice Mayor Manalo has asked to be excused this evening. All right. I'm going to turn this over now to our city manager, Ms. Martel, and you can lead us into what I guess the script is going to be tonight and why we're here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Tonight, the long-awaited interviews for...
I thought you brought Adrian back. I figured she was gonna have to come up here and vote.
Well, that's how long it's been. So that's why I asked her to be here, so we could validate exactly how long it's been, that we have been pondering the development of these sites back to the days of redevelopment and certainly prior to the Great Recession of our time when the markets went south and development pretty much dried up and subsequent to that redevelopment went away. So it's been a very long journey for Daly City to have the potential opportunity for some development on prime commercial property in this city to be developed, both to provide huge community benefits as well as to diversify the economic base in Daly City and hopefully to generate revenue that we sorely need for a variety of services here. The combination of all of those things, the community benefits as well as the revenue and helping to switch up the mix of our economic base are all equally important when you consider the projects that are gonna be discussed tonight and the value of the sites that we have available for helping to build a sound, sustainable revenue base for the city. So we have a very specific process tonight that we have developed that ensures that the council, in conducting these interviews, are giving all the developers who are interested in the sites a fair and equitable opportunity to make their case to you about what they have to offer the city of Daly City and to help to you to get a better assessment of the proposals that we've seen, partially in conceptual form in writing. But now you'll have an opportunity tonight through these interviews to question the development teams about more specifics. So in order to review the process, not for the council but also for the public who are here and those who are at home watching, we want them to understand exactly the rigorous process that has brought us to this evening. So I'm gonna ask the Director of Economic and Community Development, Tatum Mothershead, to review that process.
Thank you, Ms. Martel.
We also have Ken Hira here from Cosmont, who will probably go over it a little more specifically than myself. But basically, the city, once we had our long-range property management plan approved by the state, that was the state's green light for us to dispose of or keep our properties, either to keep them for public use, which we have done so on some of our properties, but also to dispose of them at a later date for development purposes. And so the three sites that we are reviewing tonight were included in the long-range property management plan for future development. As such, we released an RFQ, a Request for Qualifications, at the end of March. And we gave about a month for the development community to respond to that RFQ. And we sent the RFQ to developers we knew were interested in the site and also we worked with Cosmont to distribute them to developers that they were familiar with that did large developments. Before I go into that, just so you're aware, there are three sites that we're looking at this evening. The first site is at Hunnibro Serra and Westlake Avenue. It's actually a large site that's bisected by Westlake Avenue, so it's actually two larger pieces. So that's the first site we'll be looking at. We have one proposal, and that's from Duggan's Mortuary, and you'll see them a little bit later. Site two is our hotel site. That's at 1837 Hunnibro Serra Boulevard. That's at the northern end of DC Station, and it was zoned for a hotel at the time of the entitlements for Pacific Plaza. For that site, we have two proposals. The council may remember that when we provided an update back in June, there were four proposals. We've had two developers drop out. And the third site is at 6401 Mission Street. That's the northern triangular piece, just north of 88 Hillside, the multifamily and retail mixed-use development. That site is zoned for office and retail. And for that one, we have two developers and with two very distinct uses that are quite different. So we'll be going through those, but those were the properties that were included in the RFQ. I don't know if...I invite Ken Hira up. He's our representative from Cosmont. He can go over in more detail what the RFQ process was.
Before you begin, is it...
Ken.
Ken Cosgrove?
My name's Ken Hira.
Yes.
With Cosmont Companies.
Cos...okay, I'm kinda a little bit confused. I think it would be proper if he joined...would you want him up at the lectern or would you rather him sit next to you, Ms. Martel, as part of...
You want me to speak from there or here? Okay.
Please join us. Thank you.
Great, well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name's Ken Hira, Executive Vice President with Cosmont Companies. And just by way of background, Cosmont Companies has been in business for about 31 years, helping cities with economic development and a variety of tasks that are related to economic development and also trying to, at the end of the day, bring projects to fruition and make projects reality for many, many cities. We've written numerous RFQs and Ps on behalf of cities and been through this process before in terms of vetting developers and trying to find good partners, if you will. And we've negotiated many public-private transactions in our history. In the case of Daly City, of course, this RFQ and P, we call it Request for Qualifications, followed by a Request for Proposal, if you will, sort of two different rounds. We've tried to facilitate a wide outreach to...and find qualified private-sector entities to really come and be a developer and a partner to the city in a transparent process to hopefully bring the economic development goals to fruition that you guys have discussed and hoped for. So our approach was, in what we're calling Round One, was to be more qualifications-based. And in that, we're looking for developers to...and private investors, if you will, and businesses to show that they are qualified. And of course, the decision is yours to make, but this first round should help you all come to a decision on maybe taking it to the second round, where the second round is more detailed and it's more of a Request for Proposal. So you might find, and our goal is to get to economics, you know, and actual specifics of a project and timing, more specifics than you might hear tonight, but this is a process too, by way of interviews, that you're certainly open to ask whatever questions you feel fit. But this first round, by way of criteria from our estimation, we'd like to see developers and the private-sector folks evaluated on the basis of their experience, a concept that maybe they can discuss or show to us, should they have that for us, and then certainly financial wherewithal, very important, I think, that defines qualifications. And then with respect to the actual proposals that were submitted, we asked for a certain, you know, set of items, and we would like to make sure that they responded to that. So there's a certain responsiveness. And we've done this before where we've weighted those criteria and tried to ascribe a ranking system, if you will. And part of that ranking system comes out of this interview process, clearly. So that's pretty much where we're at, and then the decision is yours as to how to move to the next round.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Brother Ventura?
Yes, sir. So when you say this is the first round, does it necessarily mean that the first round is sort of closed? There are no other proposals coming forward? This is where...like, for example, the hotel site, we're down now to two. That's...that process for other developers to come in is...
Let me answer that for you, council member. The city council will make the determination.
Yeah.
We've gotten input from our consultants in terms of how to address the process and to review things. But if the council decided at the conclusion of these interviews and after we schedule another separate meeting for you to have some deliberations about what you hear tonight, you decide that you want to cast the net wider and invite others in, you certainly can make that determination. So it doesn't have to be the end of the line tonight for those who have submitted. We could expand it further. I think that the...our consultants would agree that we, you know, with the timeline that we had available, we certainly...and they marketed quite a bit.
Yeah.
So developers who potentially had the ability and the interest in developing this particular site probably had the opportunity to respond. But it doesn't mean that we can't open it up again.
I'm just...I'm curious because I...maybe it's through my naivete, but I thought there would be more interest than what we have before us now. And disappointed in knowing that we're only down to two now, that three had pulled out for whatever reason. And so that's a little disheartening to me that we're just, you know, I thought it would be more competitive, that's all.
I can only respond by saying, and I certainly don't disagree with city manager, but the part of this process is also to really understand the market, because...and the market sometimes tells us certain things. That's how I view it. We went out to a pretty wide net, frankly, and I was frankly a little bit surprised too, especially particularly with the office site. You know, it might tell us a little bit about something of what's going on in the marketplace as well. And from a hotel perspective, I found interesting that you had four responses. I thought that was pretty...that was pretty good. But I have experienced also, at the end of the day, some folks at the final hour make a decision that either the opportunity isn't right for them or, you know, there's something that isn't that great of a fit. And to that end, if we haven't found the right private-sector partner, then it's certainly your decision to keep looking. But I think we've done...we've gone to the marketplace and tried to really vet this process. And of course, on the other site, you know, there's the third site, there's two submittals that are different from each other's. So that'll also help you, you know, guide you, I guess, in a sense to say, wow, the market kind of was coming from different angles in that case for that particular site.
So I would just add one final comment on that question that you've raised, council member, and that is that while you can make the argument that we might want more to consider, I think we have to look at the quality of the development teams that we have received and their track record in the kinds of hotels that they have developed. And you may very well be able to say that we have sort of a niche in...on our site because it's not the largest site around. It has some benefits because it's adjacent to, you know, the Bart Station. It's San Francisco close. It's a whole lot of things, but there are some limitations to the site in terms of the size and being in close proximity to residential neighborhood and what potentially could be height limitations and other things that might make a more large-scale developer of hotels reluctant to wanna pursue that site. But I think the thing that we...if you...I'm certain all of you have read the materials you got. The two teams that we're gonna...you're going to be interviewing today are definitely high-quality, definitely high-quality developers and could do an excellent job. But that doesn't preclude us from, again, casting the net broader again.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. I wrote down a couple of things. So if we want to get more detail and it's based upon the detail, I guess that's to come. We make it known and...okay. And, sir, you made mention about the ranking system. I see some of the questions that's going to be asked here and we're asked to rate, but in the absence of some sort of rubrics as to what good looks like, I think it becomes very subjective based upon what each one of us feel, you know, in regards to development. But I'm hopeful that we will all do our best because we're trying to ensure fairness and each developer is gonna be asked the same question. So thank you so much.
So, Mr. Mayor, those interview questionnaire forms that we've given you that has some numbers on it, it's not a hard, fast ranking. You're not gonna necessarily determine the developer based on how many points they get. It's really just for each of you...
Okay.
...to sort of clarify in your own mind, as you hear a lot of information, what resonates with you more than something else.
Gotcha.
So it's a...it is subjective, but it's for your own subjective evaluation...
Thank you.
...of each of the candidates along the lines of the things that are most important to you as you assess each one of them.
Thank you so much.
I just have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is one the highest score or is five the highest score? But it doesn't say.
We would assume five. Five is the highest.
Yeah, okay. That's what I was assuming.
That's why trying to rank them by points is not really the point.
Right, but just so that we're all talking the same language.
Good point. We thought one might be the highest, so you want to get the lowest score possible, right?
Exactly.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you so much. All right, so shall we begin? Is it okay unless my colleagues have any questions? Okay, great. Oh, yes, thank you, Ms. Mothershead. All right, first, on the agenda, we'll begin with Duggan's Mortuary, Site Number One. Good evening, sir.
Can you see your notes, Dan?
Yes, I can.
It got a little dark.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor Sylvester and members of the council. My name is Dan Duggan from Duggan's Serra Mortuary. As a longtime active member of the Daly City community, I thank you for this opportunity to help us expand our facilities and, most importantly, stay in Daly City. My great-grandmother's family started in the funeral business in San Francisco in 1885. My brother Bill and I are fourth generation. My sons, Matt and Joey, are fifth generation in our family business. This year, we celebrate 54 years in Daly City. We are very proud to be the number-one family-owned and operated funeral provider in the entire state of California. Duggan's...it's a true statement. Duggan's and Daly City also serves more San Francisco families than any San Francisco-based funeral home. Duggan's is a destination hub of Daly City. I was amazed when we ran the numbers that 78% of the families we serve come from city...come from other cities to our city to do business. That's nearly eight out of 10 families we bring into Daly City from other communities. Last year, we hosted over 1,600 services, bringing in over 240,000 visitors to Daly City. Duggan supports over 35 nonprofit organizations in Daly City every year. Some of the things we're proud of, we present the Duggan's Kindness Scholarship to the nicest kid in the class at local graduating eighth-grade graduations. We present scholarships annually at Jefferson High School and Westmore High School. Annually, we organize the Thomas Poliseta Business to Student Scholarship Awards Program. My mother, Madeline, served several years on the Seton Hospital Auxiliary Board, and I have been a very active board member on the supporters of the Dolby Senior Center for the last 15 years. Many of our staff do volunteer work in the community as well. We have a great need for expansion. Daly City has supported four previous expansions of our facilities. Daly City also helped us expand our parking, allowing us to purchase the old Westlake Avenue next to our building, as well as three vacant lots adjoining Marsh Bank Park. Long-time funeral homes in San Francisco and the Peninsula are closing, and much of their business is coming to Duggan's. Sullivan's Funeral Home, longtime San Francisco firm, and just this month, Valenti-Marini-Pirata in the Excelsior District of San Francisco, very close to Daly City, closed their doors. We were able to purchase all their pre-arrangement files from both Sullivan's and Valenti-Marini-Pirata, and those families will now be coming to Duggan's. Whether we like it or not, we are not getting any younger. We anticipate a tremendous surge of baby boomers will be coming to Duggan's in the next 10 to 20 years.
To visit?
I'm hoping 25.
To spend the night. We want to be prepared for the surge of business and the industry trend for flexible reception and event spaces as well as parking. Our goal, our goal is to purchase the existing parking lot and expand our event space and reception facilities for our growing business. Our newly envisioned Reception and Events Center will keep events and receptions here in Daly City. Our goal is also to provide a positive financial impact to Daly City by attracting more business, visitors, and events. Investment in Daly City. Most importantly, this expansion project will keep Duggan's in Daly City. We forecast it will create at least 30 new jobs in addition to our 65 full and part-time staff we now have. The Duggan's domino effect of consumer spending will attract new revenue streams immediately for our great city of Daly City. My sincere thank you to all of you. Let me introduce our architect, Rick Williams, to present our beautiful new event center. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rick Williams with Van Meter Williams Pollak. This is really very much Dan and Winnie's vision for this facility. We worked very closely with them, and they came up with the whole vision, the program, the overall development, and worked very closely with them to get needs, fill needs that they had to expand their existing facility. The new facility is approximately 52,000 square feet. It includes event space, including one large event space for 250 people, but the three event spaces could hold as many as 500 people. It includes office and retail space along Hunnibro Serra Boulevard. And it also includes adding additional parking beyond that that is currently on the site, which is in... throughout their programming of their facilities. We're gonna not just purchase the site and redevelop the site itself, but we're really thinking of this as creating a whole new entry off of Westlake Avenue, that it'll be a new entry corridor where we organize the circulation. We will be connecting the existing facility to the old facility, and it will really be more of a campus-like feel as pedestrians can cross and wander through the site, new landscaping, a new beautification along Westlake Avenue. And we'll still be maintaining a connection to the existing office and parking garage, which we use...they use still occasionally when they have the very large facilities on the weekends, very large events on the weekends. The expansion, as we illustrated here, you can see the relationship to the garage in the background, their existing facility on the right. You can see that you won't actually be aware of much of the parking as portions of it with the grades on the property will be partially underground. We'll have a nice frontage, so the street won't be a further extension of parking structure. And the events will be a large...the event reception hall will be a large, tall space, and there'll be the one large space with kitchen facilities, et cetera, and then there'll be a large central hall for gathering and circulation. And then two additional events facilities that will also be set up as potential chapels to the upper side of that. So we think that it will also have expanded outdoor space on each side, one looking into the court and central circle, and the other taking advantage, as you get a little bit higher, of the views over towards the ocean. One of the things that people have asked us is, does this impact the potential for the development of the adjacent parcel that the city currently owns and was part of this original RFP? We do not believe that it will. We actually think that there is substantial potential development on the other site as a free, standing-alone site. We estimated that it could include approximately 200,000 square feet of office and parking on the site in a very large structure that would fit in with the rest of the facilities very extensively. So we don't believe that this site being developed independently will negatively impact that site. We think that it actually adds a little more variety and character and adds a little bit of a...it won't create such a wall along the freeway and to the back to the neighborhood. So we think that it's a good transition and creates a little bit of open space and open air along both of you from Hunnibro Serra and the freeway itself. So we feel that this still allows for ample development on that site that will eventually add to the success in Daly City. Talk just briefly about the economic impacts in greater detail. We're gonna allow Winnie to do that.
Hi, I'm Winnie Duggan Sullivan. I'm with Sierra Enterprises, which is the family-held real estate corporation behind Duggan's Serra Mortuary. And as Dan Duggan was explaining, Duggan's Serra Mortuary is in a growth state, and it's poised for additional growth in the future. We currently are the number-one family-owned funeral home in California. Last year, we did over $9 million in gross revenue, and we had over 240,000 visitors through our doors. One of the unique things about the funeral home model is that we spend over $1 million annually in obituary notices throughout various media outlets, driving visitors to Daly City. As they arrive here at Daly City for service, they incrementally spend money in other businesses, whether it's buying flowers for a family or spending an evening having a meal out with family and friends or simply a tank of gas. So our growth in visitation is going to be driving additional revenue in the coming years. We currently employ over 65 employees. We are highly involved in the community, supporting over 35 organizations locally. We want to continue to be a valuable member of the community. Our proposed project will be bringing an additional over $1 million in revenue that we currently refer to other event centers, such as the San Francisco's Irish Cultural Center, South San Francisco's Basque Center is another location. By moving forward with this project, we will be capturing that revenue, bringing it to Daly City. We are outpacing other national funeral homes in the industry. We are outpacing other national funeral homes in the industry. Part of this growing trend for the industry is the aging baby boom, but in addition, in our local market, as Dan mentioned, we have local funeral homes that are closing, and we are acquiring their customers. In the next five years, we estimate that our growing revenue impact for local Daly City businesses will be upwards of twenty-eight million annually. And we expect to be hiring over additional thirty employees. Our proposed project plan also includes additional office space and light retail that we intend to lease out to other businesses that will provide additional revenue for the city, as well as jobs. Our team is assembled of Sierra Enterprises, as well as Van Meter Williams and Pollak and Bay Relations. Upon getting project approval, we expect to augment our team with an experienced um, construction project manager, as well as working with union contractors for our site build. We have the funds for the property purchase. We have been working with our cons- um, our local banking partner First National Bank for construction financing. So, we've been spent the past year developing a design plan, working with community partners, and we are ready to swiftly move forward to construction upon project approval. We thank you for this opportunity to expand here in Daly City. We look forward to working with you, and I'd like to open it up to questions.
Thank you so much. If we can have, thank you, thank you, uh, Ms. Martell. Okay, um. So, we have a few questions as prepared, uh, and Ms. Martell, if you can help me, since it's my first time doing this, I guess we just go into questions now, right, and?
Um, the thought was that, um, we basically would, you would just direct the questions right in a row, uh, to each of the council members, uh, so that each of you have an opportunity to ask questions. Obviously, follow-up questions that may arise from the responses you get.
Sure.
You'll moderate if someone else has any additional question or follow-up that they'd like to make, so.
Okay.
I think if we structured them so that we could just go right in a row and, um, I know you had a preference for the last question, so we.
Yes, I do.
Left that for you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Martell. What would I like to do is share the wealth here amongst my colleagues, and uh, they can ask question, they can say things differently than I can say things, so I like to share it. So, uh, Ms. Christensen, would you, uh, be willing, you wanna start?
I'll start with question number one.
Thank you.
The proposals outlined for each development site should produce for both the proposed developer and the community. Please describe the community benefits and the amenities that your project will provide if selected. I know you've already presented some of those, but feel free to go a little deeper.
Well, yeah, I, I think, you know, our, our community are a proven track record of community uh, support and involvement. You know, we just don't sit back and reap the benefits of having a business in Daly City. We really feel it's important to be involved and support the city, and, you know, I kind of, uh, I, I mentioned, uh, this kindness award that we do at, at eighth grade graduations at like ten different schools. And I present about half of them myself. A lot of the graduations are on the same date, so you can't do them all yourself, but, um, it's, uh, it's kind of came from my mom, you know, our, I think that the growth of our business it has been over the years, we've never been really, um, uh, as a business financially, uh, looking for financial rewards. Our rewards are, and I brought the kindness award is, uh, that kind of, my mom always had a way of saying to people all the time, "Thank you most kindly," you know, so there's, there's, there's a, I think part of our main success is we're kind, compassionate, uh, people that work for us, uh, with, with big hearts. And it's really that, uh, that has worked to grow our business. That separates us from our, our competitors. Um, most, uh, most competitors these days in the funeral business are, are corporate-owned. Uh, and when you're family-owned and you do it right, you're gonna keep growing your business. And we anticipate, um, over the years that there's gonna be more funeral homes closing. And we fully intend to be the last one standing, per se. Uh, and it, we want it to be right here in Daly City.
Thank you.
I hope that answered your question?
Uh, if I may, I'd like to comment on that same question that Councilmember Christensen asked you. You really didn't go into too much detail as to the other benefits you provide, but I'd like to help also name a few. Uh, that is the visitors that come in to Daly City and filling up our few and only hotels. And that brings this business for the.
And it, and it's not just for the, the funeral service itself.
Right.
Um, recently, we, we took care of Mrs. Verducci, the longtime owner of Ceremony Ford. And, you know, they have a large family, and when they came in and met with me to make just the funeral arrangements, then after they met with me, just making the funeral arrangements part, then the whole family went together down to Vowls, you know, about twelve of them, and had, had a dinner at Vowls. And then, you know, you had, then you have the night of the rosary. The families often go out, let's go get dinner, you know, and come back for the rosary that evening. And then you have the main event, the funeral, the next day. And they typically, most every funeral has a reception. It's just like a wedding. So, there, 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 you know, food and funerals go we- very well together. And the, the, actually, the future in the funeral business is to be able to provide a reception space where people can have the service right at Duggan's and just walk across the, the hallway into the reception center.
And I remember in discussions, uh, with you earlier, talking about having caterers so that when people come and they go, "Well, we need a caterer for our reception." Where, how do we do this? That your emphasis would be on local, uh, restaurants that.
Correct.
Uh, could do catering.
Yeah, actually, Joseph Westlake has done catering for us already. Uh, we use, um, um, Moonstar.
Yeah.
Quite a bit. Daisy at Moonstar, they do a lot of reception work for us as well. Uh, Knights Catering at San Francisco comes into our place, uh, sometimes as well.
Thank you so much. All right, any further questions on number one for Mr. Duggan? All right, uh, number two, uh, Mike?
Hey, Dan, how you doing?
Hello, Michael.
Dan, if you are the successful proposer, who are you up against?
No one.
If you are the successful proposer, chance of that. What is the anticipated timeline for project implementation, and how will it be financed? Equity, debt, or both?
Uh, the, the finite, uh, we're, we're fortunate that we do not have any mortgage on our property at all that, at, at Duggan's. Uh, actually, most of the properties that our real estate corporation owns, there are no mortgages on any properties. We actually, it will, it will work out very well for us. Many years back, my father bought two ten-acre parcels over in Fairfax. It's just blank, uh, bare land, and also a lot over in Oakland. And since it was many years ago, this is an ideal opportunity. Uh, we have just listed those for sale. Um, we wanna do a tax-deferred exchange, sell the two ten acre parcels and that Oakland lot, and do a tax-deferred exchange into this bare land piece of property. So, we anticipate being able to essentially buy the property, but not going to any debt to purchase the property. Now, we will have to get a construction loan, uh, from First National Bank, and, and we have a excellent relationship with them. We've known Tom, we, we knew Tom McGraw when he was a young man, the president of the bank, uh, so. We have a great relationship with First National as well.
Um, last question, I guess, would be the timeline for the project from, from getting a, getting an okay today to opening the doors.
Uh, opening doors? I would s-
Is someone else scared of? We're gonna let you guess.
Well, I, I, I will add one thing, is we do have a motivation in that we do want to work out hopefully something with the city that during construction, we could do new paving and improvements to the lot across the street, so we could use that lot during construction. So, that lot that doesn't look very nice. We'd like to go in and put in new paving there and striped, and it would be nice first-class parking while the construction project is going on.
That's very, that would be, I think you should've said that on number one. That's your answer to number one.
And then that won't affect parking in the neighborhood or whatever, which I'm sure Judith would appreciate up the street, you know.
Thanks, Dan. So.
If I could just give you kind of a quick outline, and we placed one in our, uh, original qualifications slash proposal, uh, package. But what we're anticipating is, is that as swiftly as the city, uh, desires to move, we would enter into an exclusive negotiating agreement. We would then, as we gather additional property information, and we would immediately begin refining the design and incorporating, going in through a planned district development, uh, process to the city, 'cause there will need to be a general plan and zoning, uh, modification. Uh, we would then, uh, make sure that we kind of tie that, uh, agreement in with finalizing the, uh, disposition development agreement, the DDA. And then, uh, at the land sale, we would be able to submit the PD, uh, submittal to the city. We anticipate we could get that done in approximately six to eight to ten months, depending on exactly how quickly everything moves. Uh, they are in, uh, they have a strong desire to move as swi- quickly as possible. We would then go through the jurisdictional processing, any environmental evaluations that have to go forward. We're anticipating another six months for that, four to six months, in the conversations we've had with the city. And then, uh, we would be able to move forward at a certain point of time to begin the documents and to be ready for permitting, so that once we received approvals, we would be able to begin construction as swiftly as we could get the permit. So, we're hoping that this process could be anywhere from a year to eighteen months to start construction. Uh, we, they would love to have it more, be more swiftly as possible. And then we're anticipating that the construction time would be sixteen to eighteen months.
I was one month off in my mind.
Very good.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Engona, um, Councilmember Buenaventura, please.
Yes, um, so, the city intends to sell the development properties available at fair market value, not involving any financial subsidy. Does your proposal reflect this understanding? If not, what is the expectation?
Our, our, we've already obtained an appraisal on the property. Uh, we would probably fully anticipate the city would do as well, but, you know, we're planning on paying whatever market value is for the property.
Okay, thank you.
Good answer.
I'm gonna reserve the last one, so I'll go back to, uh, Councilmember Christensen.
Okay. Question number four. Will you, as the proposed project developer, also be managing the operations and services envisioned in your conceptual plan? Have you estimated the number of construction ra- related and permanent jobs that your project will potentially generate? Some of these you've already answered. How many jobs did you say? Twenty?
Thirty.
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 But, but then there would also be jobs in, you know, eh, if we rent out the retail space to a florist or Phil's Coffee or whatever. I'm not, I'm not counting those jobs.
Right. Those are just, uh, Duggan's jobs, and what would be in those, uh, jobs along, uh, the storefronts on Juniper Sarah? There would be additional jobs.
Exactly, over and above that.
If, if I could just jump in for one minute. One of the other things that in, in speaking with the bank, uh, in discussing the financing, the bank also provided a list of contractors, which they uh, did strongly encourage you to use for, uh, for the construction of the project. Um, they, uh, I'm actually familiar with, they had four contractors on the list approximately, and they had, uh, two of them that I've done multiple projects with over time. Uh, the others are also very strong, reputable, quality contractors, and all four of them were also union contractors and had done work in Daly City previously.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, you're up.
Ms. Christensen, all right, um. The, the question I have, and I have some, uh, questions beyond that, but on this particular subject. Open and equitable hiring practices are of great importance to the city. What specific commitments are you willing to make to, one, hire from a local workforce? B, utilize a project labor agreement for construction? And C, provide a labor peace agreement? Now, you've kind of answered part of that already, because I took some notes, and you said, "Union contractors", which is good, and, uh, just made mention again.
I'll give you an example. Um, actually, I've hired two new people full-time in the last month, and both are Daly City residents.
Okay.
One, uh, one's a female Hispanic, the other is, um, Afro-American gentleman, both Daly City residents, so. You know, we, we're, we hired diverse, diverse Daly City residents, and that would be our priority. I mean, it's, it's beneficial for us to have people close to their job. Typically, people that have a commute. We recently had an employee that commuted from, uh, Vallejo, and I knew it was just a matter of time before they were gonna move on. You know, so, it's in our best interest, too. You know, we have situations where we call someone that's off-duty uh, to come back in to, when there's a death call, to go out to the house, so we like local people, closer the better.
Thank you. Um. I don't know how to, uh, put this, but I was talking about like a peace agreement. We want the business to succeed, and it's going to succeed. But at the same time, we don't wanna see pickets out in front, uh, during construction, or you said you'd be hiring, uh, more employees, like, uh, sixty-five employees. I think you have, uh, thirty-five now, and you'd be hiring up.
The other way around.
The other way around. Sixty-five now, and you'll probably be hiring about thirty-five. And, um, I'm looking at the employees, eh, y- you know, uh, will they have the right to get together and, uh, express their concerns? I mean, we don't wanna see operations, I don't wanna see Duggan's to be boycotted, uh, picketing and other events. It's bad for Duggan's, and it's bad for the city, for folks to see that. And to have a labor peace agreement to allow them to come together, whether it's to meet or whether it's during construction, to speak with you and express their concerns, whether it's over wages or what have you, I, I'm just wondering if you would be open to that, and if that would be part of the, uh, negotiating agreement, if you'd be willing to go along with that.
So, I, Mr. Mayor, are, are you addressing the, the con- the contractor that we would hire?
Well, it could be the contractor.
We're, we're planning on hiring a union contractor. We are, we are the only funeral home in Northern California that has, has still maintained any union connection. Uh, not all our staff is union, but our, our embalming staff and preparation staff are Teamsters. And, uh, our family has a, uh, back, back, uh, this is called Bloody Thursday in San Francisco. There was a longshoreman's strike.
Yeah.
And my grandfather really got on the map with union, the unions, because he took care of the two gentlemen that were killed in that longshoreman's start, strike.
Yeah.
Gratis, you know, and ever since then, that's why we've held on to that union connection, even though it's just a part of our staff, but it's, it's important to our, our history as well.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, for clarification with the question that we've prepared for the council is whether or not future employees who may want to unionize to would be allowed to do so, and that you wouldn't throw up any obstacles to them being able to do that if they wanted to?
Actually, uh, years pa- years past, our, all our funeral directors and arra- and arrangement counselors were union. But, uh, we, we've always, uh, they ended up withdrawing from the, the union because we just, we follow the benefits for all our staff of what we do with our union staff. So, they basically get the exact same benefits our union staff does, but they don't have to pay the union dues, so.
They opted out.
They opted out, yes. But we've kind of deliberately held. But we've kind of deliberately held on to the Teamsters part with our embalming and preparation staff people. It works good for us.
If I could just jump in for just a second and talk about the labor agreement, and I think maybe the union resolved some of that issue. But we would want to speak to our specific contractor who is eventually selected to see whether or not they also see the ability to perform their work with any specific agreement before coming to an answer on that one. But I think that where they're really putting their best foot forward, all four contractors are very reputable, have done extensive work in the city, and we wouldn't anticipate any issues arising from the construction of the project with that past history that they have.
We wouldn't anticipate any problems because of that past history and the experience of the contractors you'd be using. Okay, but I think it would make the folks feel much better, you know, if they had a labor peace agreement as part of the negotiating agreement. I think they would be much more comfortable with that. All right, the other questions I had, you have the retail storefront, any idea who's going to go into those yet?
Not specifically, but we would probably target, we currently deal primarily with Paul's Flowers in Colma.
Oh, yeah.
But we've also spoken to Paul about, it would be better for us and better for Daly City tax-wise for him to have an office right there at Duggan's, even if the, where the sales could be done there, but the actual work could still be done in his Colma shop. So then the tax dollars are coming here. Phil's Coffee, we really feel we need a coffee shop. And actually, the owners of Phil's Coffee, they are part of the Ramallah Palestinian community, and we take care of all of the Palestinian community. So we know them, and I think if we had the square footage that would work, I think they would be interested.
That's great, you're getting close to donuts, I like donuts. Let's see, what else? Parking, now I noticed you folks utilize that lot for a lot of parking. I do understand you're going to have, it looks like, two underground parking and...
Two levels.
You're going to help pave across the street as an added benefit.
Yes.
And would folks be able to use that when you're not using it?
Across the street?
Across the street.
For sure.
All right.
And that's just during construction?
What, that's just during construction? If there's some agreement, or if it's sitting there and not being used, you know, we could...
But if an office building comes along and wants to build there.
Right, the site is destined to become an office building, so it needs the parking there.
It'll be, okay.
Yes, so let's not forget that we will continue to market that site for an office building.
Great, thank you. Let's see, rentals, 16 to 18 months, that's all I have. Any more from my colleagues? Oh, Mr. Buenaventura.
Dan, when your presentation talked about having these, access to these reception halls. First, do you have any pictures or graphs or anything of what that would look like on the inside?
We haven't gotten to that detail in there right now, but what we have been asked to provide is a hall that would hold approximately 250 people in seating, and then a few less, maybe 200 around tables. It's a large space, it's very, it's tall. It's actually a three-story structure, we say it's four stories because it's basically as tall as a four-story building. And so we would end up with 20 to 24-foot clear ceiling. So there would be the opportunity for some fairly large events to be able to take place in the largest of the facility rooms in the banquet hall. And that could be for, you know, though there are many, many events taking place throughout the week, as well as the weekends, from the Duggan's funeral, funerals that take place there, there will also be the opportunity occasionally for there to be other events to be there as well, and then the parking could support that as well.
So, is it a situation where you, it's clearly separated from any kind of services or chapel services that's going on? In other words, you can have your own sort of event, and it's not...
Actually, ideally, having this separate building. Because we, in our main building, we have six chapels. And there are evenings we have all six chapels going, and they're all kind of have their separate space or wing or whatever. So, we can coordinate, as long as we know when the event is, we can coordinate, you know, what chapels we're going to use. And we have, sometimes if we have two services at the exact same time, we just put one on one end of our building and one on the other end of our building. If we have a third one, we put one downstairs on the main floor, you know.
And I'm looking at this on the left, the drawing, and it looks like a lot of that space is flexible. Even the chapel space is flexible. It could be event space, it could be chapel space, depending on what else is going on. It's a scheduling issue.
Right, if we had a large reception going on, we would not be having a funeral service in this building. It would be in the original building going on.
Right, if they're marching down that center with high, high ceiling for a wedding, yet there's not going to be a funeral next door.
But it will also be, it'll also be designed so the central hall can open up, you know, large doors, and it can be overflow for the...
Wow, yeah. I like the idea that you're building in flexibility.
Yes. No, I mean, as I think I said earlier, the future in the funeral industry is you have to be able to provide reception facilities.
Kind of the one-stop shop.
Well, it's just convenient, people are parked. A lot of services with more cremation these days, a lot of services are happening right at the funeral home because it's cremation, there's no need to drive down to the crematory. So, you're having the service right in the chapel, and if people are already parked, they just walk across the driveway into the reception. It's very convenient.
Thank you. You know, one thing I've learned in starting business, this definitely is outside of my original expertise, and I've been to the facility many times now. It's really, if you think about the recent funerals you've gone to, they're almost more like family reunions. And that was something Dan expressed to me early on, and that was kind of something that I'd kind of forgotten, that it's as much about the people that are there as it is the people that they're saying goodbye to. And I think that that's an important thing to remember, that it's for the people that are there. And the people, it really is a celebration of life, it's a celebration. Oftentimes, it's people that don't get together, family members that don't get together for years. And I think that actually makes this a special space because it's for, it's for that as much as anything else.
Is the, is the goal of the project to make the front of it not look like a funeral home or look like a funeral home? Or, you know, that sort of...
We wanted to tie in with, you know, our main window architecture, you know, the Spanish architecture and such. But it's, you know, our building was built, you know, 55, 56 years ago. So you, obviously you want to have a modern twist to it, of course. And we have overflow out onto outside decks as well, which people like to go outside.
Can you flip the slide, because I see one that, I think you're trying to keep the same aesthetics as to the other buildings we have on Juniper Sarah with the glass on the bottom? I think you just had it there, nope. Uh, no, that's the campus. You went...
The other way around?
Yeah.
So that one?
Yeah, like that.
That's from Juniper Sarah.
The center there basically ties in with the center of our building right now with the big arched window.
I would say that certainly doesn't look like a funeral home. I mean, I don't know what a funeral home looks like, I've been to many and none of them look alike.
We don't care what it looks like as long as they come to Duggan's.
Well, yeah. I don't think any of them I've ever been to ever had a consistent look. You know, a lot of them are old buildings that are traditional and beautiful.
The original building was more of a Spanish architecture after, you know, Father Juniper Sarah that found the missions and such.
This is a sort of a modern take on it with that.
Well, one of the specific directions we had given Rick's team was we wanted to use campuses like Stanford and Santa Clara University that have that more modern adaptation of the mission-style architecture, because that is similar to our legacy and our brand. We're on Juniper Sarah Boulevard, we're at Duggan Sarah Mortuary, so we wanted that tie-in, but we wanted a modern reflection and facility.
Where would your sign be? I mean, I know it's kind of early now, because if I was walking down that street and see all the retail there, I wouldn't even think about a funeral home unless I turned the corner on Wesley.
I would think the main sign would stay right where it is, which is on the south side of the PG&E. What is it, a pump station there or whatever?
I'm good. All right, anything else from any of my colleagues? Mr. Duggan?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, folks, so much, thank you. All right.
See, the funeral director goes last, so it was kind of nice.
Well, I'm still upset about the baby boomer thing, but...
Yeah, but Glenn, they're going to have it done for both of us.
Oh, my goodness.
It'll be ready.
Just don't forget us little people, okay? All right, moving on, we have a presentation by the folks from the Majestic Hotel, developer presentation. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and council members and to the community. I'm Eileen Kanta from AF Kanta, Inc., and my co-developer, Majestic Hospitality Group. And here's David Cooperberg with Dream Hotel Group. We wanted to show you a video first before we start our introduction. And that's all, folks. Here is our presentation to you guys. So, our team has over more than 40 years of experience in the hospitality industry. And our goal is that we're building more than a lodging facility. We're here to basically engage, our site will be engaging with the community, with the locals, not just the guests. And something that the community will be proud of. We see that unscripted hotels, which is part of the Dream Hotel Group, as a critical part of the revitalization of downtown Daly City. Daly City needs a vibrant classy facility that will provide some retail, lodging, food and beverage to start the change. First, we start with the foot traffic must be created. We need to give people a reason to visit and walk around. We need a destination site to have a change within the city and the community. Renewal starts with properties that are inviting, that will give a community what it needs and create a feeling of inclusion. We look at unscripted as a key to the revitalization of Daly City. By having a hotel, guests to populate the streets and patron the local vendors, we are creating that foot traffic. We want to engender the surrounding peninsula communities to visit and enjoy the new Daly City.
So, we're going to skip through here a little bit and a bit around, but I'll walk you through the site. Again, my name's Chris Henner with Majestic Hospitality Group. What we're envisioning here really is a destination hotel, a place, as Eileen was saying, that is special and unique, that attracts both visitors as well as local community members. As you can see here, I think as you guys are referring to, it's Site Two on Juniper Sarah Boulevard. Well, what we're trying to do is maximize the site's potential. As you can see sort of on this land use diagram here, you can see it comprises both parking of a main tower as well as a outdoor amenity deck and pool. So this are architectural renderings of what unscripted hotels look like. And unscripted, as Eileen mentioned, is by Dream Hotels, which is a, I think fair to say, minority-owned hotel group. And what unscripted is doing is creating emotions and experiences in a, what we're calling an upscale lifestyle offering. With that being said, is that we are envisioning to hit the city's targets of being able to offer both 200 rooms and up to 7,500 square feet of flexible event space. Is that we do need to create a 10-story tower with a podium that will be able to house all the parking necessary in both service and underground, and then we'll also be providing transportation as sort of as a carpoolway for employees coming to the facility. So, unfortunately, it's a little small in this, but to give you some flavor, and hopefully you've been given these packages as well. As far as the contemporary, modern styling that we're trying to evoke here, some of that is also over the place and is of an essence of where it's located, but also some of that is cutting edge. Again, you know, we're pushing for, as everybody in the industry talks about, and I'm one of them, a millennial, and being able to offer that lifestyle opportunity, is that it needs to be engaging, it needs to be fresh, it needs to be new. And that, as far as from an aesthetic point of view, is something that we're trying to capture and acquire as part of this development project. So, it's a quick rundown, I'm going to have to look here at my phone for the numbers. As I mentioned, it is a 200-key facility that we're looking to propose with 7,500 square feet of event space. In addition to that, we're looking at providing up to about 4,200 square feet of food and beverage space, and that includes both offerings on the ground floor as well as on the roof. In addition to having retail space, which I believe is about 2,500 square feet of retail space, as well as the event space, which, again, I want to emphasize flexible. And we know that there is a need and a demand in the city to have additional event space, and I believe the team who was before us also is echoing the same theme. What we're trying to do is the flexible event space is the sense that you can have small groups, you can have large groups, you have indoor groups, outdoor groups. We want to be able to be able to cater to any kind of group coming in. We do have a capacity limit of about 250 people for the largest facility of venues in the building, but, you know, that's open to being worked, but that's as we're proposing it right now. Overall from that, you know, with our partner, food and beverage is a big, is a big deal. So, bringing in outside local groups to partner with us as venues, as also as destinations. We want the restaurants to be destinations unto themselves, so that, again, that's about bringing the community, and we want them to be able to enjoy the venues as well, not just be for hotel guests. So, being able to have special destinations of each and every unit is important to us for that food and beverage offering. Eileen, if you want to advance to...
And just so you guys know, that Dream Hotel Group opened their first California hotel in Los Angeles just last month.
Correct. Next slide. So, again, here's some more images, and I believe this is, I'll let David jump in here about this property, but these are ones that you're working on.
Yeah, just to give you a little background on Dream Hotel Group, we've been around for over thirty years, started off in New York City. We opened up our first lifestyle hotel in nineteen ninety-nine on Forty-Ninth and Broadway, followed by the dream up in Midtown a couple of years later, and then our real claim to fame, the dream down in the Meatpacking District, which was an area of New York City that people thought we were crazy going into. The Dream Downtown is still one of the leading lifestyle hotels in New York, if not the country. Just to give you an idea, that hotel does just under forty million dollars just in food and beverage revenue every year. So, still one of the leading lifestyle hotels, as I mentioned, in the country. We opened up, as Eileen mentioned, Hollywood last month with the Dream Hotel, and we started, we opened up our first unscripted hotel in Durham, North Carolina, last week. And we just announced a new deal in Austin, Texas for an unscripted. And so, you know, our unscripted, in Dallas also, for an unscripted. So, your unscripted hotel is very curated, it's all about bringing in the community. We design really our hotels for the community first and second for the guest, because our belief is if you get the community there and the place is activated and people are hanging out, the guests will come.
So, some additional images, I think, you wanted to touch on, some of the food and beverage outlets that you guys just discussed.
Yeah, you know, as you can see, very high-designed, very curated. The one on the right is in our dream downtown, a high-end Mexican restaurant. We have our property up on Forty-Fourth and Broadway, and old, the oldest actors' club in New York called The Lambs Club, really kind of playing into the old actors who used to go there, the Barry Moores and so on. So, that's on the top left, so a number of our venues up there on the screen. You know, nightlife and dining is an important aspect to it, and we realize that not every venue can do forty million dollars like we do in New York, or fifty million like as we're expecting to do in Hollywood. But, you know, having the community there and having a activated nightlife and dining experience is important for us.
So, a couple of things we wanted to touch on as far as community involvement goes, is, you know, one of the big things is we want to be able to provide public gathering space, a place where people can feel at home, away from their home, to be honest, is that it's a place where they can come and gather, meet with their fellow community members, and enjoy and socialize. And I think it's important that we offer places like that in today's societies, it's becoming more a social aspect. Other measures that we're looking at introducing are transportation and greenhouse gas initiatives to bring down CO2 due to climate change. Doing that, electric charging stations, transportation demand, as I mentioned, for employees, being able to carpooling, to be able to bring people in so they don't have to drive their own cars. We are aware that the site is next to a BART station. Majestic is actually developing a property right now in partnership with Bay Rapid Transit in Dublin. So, we're working on that, that's a sixty-five-million-dollar deal for a ground-up hotel. So, we do have experience working with Bay Rapid Transit, and it's important with those partnerships to continue fostering them. Additional public safety enhancements, again, you know, being able to open this up to people, it brings in additional communities that may not have actually been interested in exploring that area. So, you're bringing people in from San Francisco, from South San Francisco, from Palo Alto, people you want to come there. So, again, that adds on to the extra factor. Enhance access, as I had mentioned, and then also light landscaping and streetscaping, we think is important, help do beautification of the site and the area around it. So, those are some initial ways that we're seeing at the start for community benefits.
And we can definitely work with Duggans on their needs in terms of housing their events, maybe the weddings instead of being at the funeral parlor.
If I have a question, should I ask now?
Please, if you'd like to.
I noticed that you talk about an outdoor swimming pool. You do understand that the temperature in Daly City is between sixty and sixty-eight degrees all year round. So, outdoor swimming, I don't know. The pool can be warm, but what about the wet person getting out of the pool? Sixty to sixty-five degrees is a little nippy, I don't know.
It is nippy, but I can tell you that a lot of destination properties, regardless if they're in a metropolitan area or in a resort destination, a resort could be the Sierras, for example, will provide outdoor pools. People who are looking to escape, usually from the Midwest and East Coast during the colder months, are looking to come and, it's warm for them, they're looking to come and use it. Since we don't have snow in this part of California, fortunately, it does allow us to have an outdoor pool. Most people are looking more to escape outside, a pool just becomes more of a background feature than an actual use feature. But fortunately or unfortunately-
So, more ambiance and sort of hanging out by the pool than not swimming in the pool.
Correct.
Depends on the person.
Yeah, well, you know, you warm yourself up with a cocktail by the pool, yeah, I get it.
You know, it is a bit of a funny thing, pools, because a lot of the rating agencies and consumers, they expect to see the pool, and they're gonna give you points based on the pool, but they don't necessarily use the pool. They just want to know it's there and it becomes a background feature.
So, it's a water feature.
Yes.
In a sense, yes.
How about you dip your feet and then have a cocktail with...
I think some important things, just as far as Dream Hotel Group and their unscripted brand goes, this is some of the partners, that corporate partners that they work with that are up on the screen, oops. Some of these names, I think, will be very familiar to people in this part of the country, such as Google and Facebook and Apple. I know these are all pretty household names across the country, but obviously their corporate headquarters are not too far from where we are. Part of what we would want to do with this property is to bring some of their events to Daly City, bringing, again, extra additional spending with the event space that we're gonna have onboard. For example, again, we're working with Workday in, on our project in Dublin. Right now, Workday is a big tech company as well. And they're actually doing, again, a pre-buyout of X-numbered nights a year at our property as well as the meeting space. So, we want to be able to enhance the offering that our corporate consumers are having, in addition to having people coming in from San Francisco Airport, coming overflow from San Francisco and Oakland, if there's, you know, if there's a big event going on when Moscone reopens. Those are all additional places where we see that, that's icing on the cake of what we're gonna put together here.
So, the tech companies, we've done our research, that they do have retreats on a monthly basis, not just the tech companies per se, Uber and Facebook and all that. And they want to support within the Bay Area community. They go a lot to Sausalito, or they go to Half Moon Bay and all that. And we want for them to come to Daly City if there's a facility that they can be housed and it's close by versus for them to stay, it will be less cost for, you know, for them to come here versus to Half Moon Bay.
And an urban destination is becoming the trend right now in the hotel space, as people are looking for that lifestyle. They don't necessarily want to be able to have to go far from home sometimes, they may just want to do staycation, they want to be in their local neighborhood, but they don't want to be at home, they want to be pampered, they want to be taken care of. So, those are all the kinds of markets that when we create a lifestyle destination property, that's what we're creating. We think Daly City has the opportunity, given its proximity to San Francisco and the rest of the Bay Area, to really harness that, because this is really where the epicenter of that movement in the U.S. is right now.
Because I look at your, under the narrative, it talks about how each new location has its own distinct personality and is rooted in the local culture. I'm assuming that the local culture you're talking about is really San Francisco Bay Area, because that particular neighborhood, which I happen to live in, I live several blocks from there, are probably not going to be your guests, because it's a low-income neighborhood, so...
Yeah, you know, we were-
So, you're talking about a broader Bay Area culture and being a destination for those people, because I don't think the really close-by people can probably afford your hotel. They might want to come and hang out in the lobby, but, so, am I right in saying it's a, you're drawing from the whole Bay Area, not just...
Yeah, correct. And when we talk about curating it for the community, we don't like to force our way in and create something that doesn't feel like it was organic.
Okay.
And also, Council, Council, Christensen, sorry, I couldn't see your name fully. The, a lot of the late thirties and early forties that are having families, they move to Daly City or Pacifica, so the community is changing. So, if you build it, they will come, is my...
Well, I think my neighborhood would be more interested in jobs at your hotel.
Yeah.
You know, that'd be great.
Yeah.
That's...
No, I mean, clearly, you know, we draw our jobs mostly from the community. You know, we just opened up in Los Angeles, and that's a different beast. But, you know, we just hired six hundred new employees. We became the largest employer in Hollywood overnight. You know, this would probably be north of a hundred jobs.
That'd be great.
So, I know you have your five or six pointed questions, so we're ready to answer them for you, Councilmember.
So, should we start our, our green questions?
Councilmember Buena Ventura, did you have something before we start?
Sure.
Okay.
I'm just curious about your rating as far as customer satisfaction. What, in terms of how many star rating, what is your...
Let me check you out.
Do you want to answer that?
Yeah, we were, for the unscripted brand, it's an upscale brand. So, you know, there's upper upscale, which would be our dream brand, which competes against the W of the world. This would be our upscale brand.
So, in layman's terms, that would be like a three-star plus, going to four, it sort of varies right in there. The industry has a bizarre lingo, just to give you a quick background, it's economy, mid-scale, upper mid-scale, upscale, upper upscale, and then luxury. So, this is, this is, and there's slut service, but that's sort of in the mid-scale. But, that's, it gets a little diluted, but to put it in layman's terms, it would be that three-star, three-star plus range of quality and experience.
And I saw in here someplace, I thought, the amount of, what rooms were gonna cost.
Yeah, that's my next question. How much do you, obviously, I'm not gonna hold you to it, but how much is it gonna cost residents to stay a night at your hotel?
I'm trying to pull that up for you, I'm sorry.
We basically, Councilman Buena Ventura, the study that we pulled were based on South San Francisco and San Francisco, since Daly City doesn't have enough, you know, comps of this level. So, there's not, there's nothing to compare against, so...
Given that San Francisco Bay Area is one of the highest markets in the country, as far as AD, or average daily rate goes, it does seem somewhat diluted compared to the numbers, you lose track of where they are. But, you know, we looked at last year, for example, it was about two-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars for a upscale to upper upscale asset in not San Francisco metro, like proper, like city-county San Francisco, but the rest of the Bay Area. About two-hundred-and-sixty dollars is what we're coming out at. So, we're probably gonna be at about a twenty or so percent bump once this opens, probably in the thirty-six-month range, if the economy continues at the same current course.
So, you lost me.
Sorry.
So, how much is the room gonna be, roughly?
You're probably looking at about the two-hundred-and-eighty-dollar mark a night of your average daily rate. And the average daily rate is the blend, the blend of all your different categories, whether it be rack rate or discounted or group.
Yeah, there will be a weekday rate and a weekend rate and all that, so...
And things change, I'm assuming, when there's a big golf tournament and...
Correct.
Yes, yes, when there's events and, and when there's events and demand, it's the supply and demand.
Okay. And, and obviously, you're, you're right near at the BART station, but are you planning on doing a shuttle service also?
For employees, yes.
But not for, for SFO?
Actually, that's, you tell me, we're not against it, we just have to evaluate if it makes sense. You know, we haven't really did the analysis, we'd really want to kind of dive down and see if it makes sense. We're not opposed to it.
What was your question?
Shuttle to the airport.
Well, geez, you've got the BART right there.
Well, that, and we're fine, there's also with travelers, a huge surge in rideshare, whether that be Lyft or Uber, that's a big part of the market now, especially in the Bay Area. So, for example, as we're working on the project over in Dublin on the East Bay, you know, we've done parking studies that are evaluating both BART impact as well as rideshare and normal traffic. So, those are things that we're all taking into consideration and making that decision.
And so, the parking is, you plan on partnering with the current existing parking there?
Yes.
That's the plan?
Yes, sir.
You're not gonna add any additional yourself?
No, we're gonna do a valet for guests. We're gonna offer valet and then do a shuttle service for employees and park them off-site.
Off-site?
Yes.
Okay.
So, we can utilize the entire square footage, since it's very minimal, and then so we can house two-hundred-and-fifty people for special events and also have, you know, housekeeping and mechanical rooms and all that stuff that you have to factor into the space provided.
It's a, it's a real balancing act, in hotels, you never have enough space.
Yeah.
So, you know, we're trying to say, you know, what are all the essentials, just to make the building run? What amenities does the guest need? What amenities are we looking to try and fulfill from the RFQ that went out, or RFP, excuse me? RFQ.
Yes.
Essentially, of what goals the city is looking for, and then what can we realistically fit within the existing zoning and guidelines? Can we make work to offer that?
So, in your analysis, this is a convention-worthy hotel that you believe will bring the Silicon Valley conventions, that kind of thing, to Daly City?
Yes.
Yes.
So, but it would be small conventions.
Well, what we've, again, in our studies-
Like meetings?
Yeah, well, we're offering, we can hold up to two-hundred-and-fifty people in the bar, like essentially your bar. If you open up all the meeting space together, you have one big event with people sitting, you can hold about two-hundred-and-fifty people, which, before going into a bigger hotel, which means you need to have more keys, that's sort of the optimal number. So, again, it's a balancing act, and we've had conversations in the past with other municipalities of working, you know, how do we not make this an upside-down hotel, where we have so much meeting space, but not enough rooms necessary to handle it?
To support them, yeah.
So, there is an equation behind it of how do we balance those two out?
Okay. Thank you. All right, thank you so much, we're gonna go into the questions. You've probably answered quite a few of them already, so we're gonna switch things around this time. Councilmember Buena Ventura, would you start with number one, please? Before I do that, so, I did mean to ask this, is Majestic related anyway with the Yosemite Majestic Hotels?
No, we're actually having a legal conversation with them right now, because we actually own the...
Who is more majestic than the other?
So, no, we-
It's one in the conversation.
Well, we have a trademark, so it's much in our favor.
Oh, okay.
So...
That's the legal conversation.
Okay. The proposals outlined for each development site should produce benefits for both the proposed developer and the community. Please describe the community benefits and amenities that your project will provide if selected.
Do you want us to recap really quick, or?
I think you answered it.
If there's anything additional to add.
No, no further, nothing further to add at this time.
Okay, great. Councilmember Christensen.
Number two, if you are the successful proposer, what is the anticipated timeline for the project implementation, and how will it be financed? Equity, debt, or both?
So, to answer the first part of that question, timeline-wise, if we were to be successful in entering an exclusive negotiating agreement with the city, we'd expect to have the hotel open within thirty-six months. So, that allows us time to finalize the deal with the city, go through the planning and permitting process, and then construction. So, of that, twenty-four months will probably be construction, and the extra twelve, we're putting in a buffer there as far as if there's any pickups or issues as far as the closing the deal with the city and the entitlement and permitting process.
It is entitled, and it's just we have to make changes according to our design, and so, that's gonna take some time.
And the second half of the question, it will be a combination of both debt and equity. There are a lot of different models that we can put to this as far as the financing component, but we're looking right now at the traditional debt and equity model, where it'd be approximately about thirty percent equity and seventy percent financed debt.
Actually, I have a follow-up on that. On, I don't know what page it is, of your thing, you said financial assumptions. If prevailing and living wage becomes a requirement by the council, by the council members, we will revisit the performance of this RFQ. This will have an effect on the pro forma and overall costs.
It does, and we have run the scenarios already, knowing that this is the Bay Area, and having a living wage and unions of is pretty, pretty standard operating in this area. Obviously, as any developer coming in, we would love to have a working relationship with the union that doesn't burn us too much in the process, but we understand that it is something that's just part of life here. With that being said, it certainly does have an impact both on construction costs and on operating costs. The deal still pencils for us. Uh, we've reviewed that already, and we are, um, comfortable in moving forward with that in mind.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Christensen for catching that. Um, Mr. Gengona?
The city intends to sell development properties available at fair market value, not involving any financial subsidy. Does your proposal reflect this understanding, and if not, what is your expectation?
Yes, it does. Take that, both points into account.
Awesome.
Okay.
That's mine.
That's it?
I, I do wanna note one thing, just as far as the team experience. I know there was a question of one of those that talked about team experience and employment and such.
We're getting there.
Oh, you're getting there, okay, sorry. I thought you said is that done? I was like, oh.
Sorry about that.
Councilmember Buenaventura?
Oh, my turn?
Yeah, you got number, uh, is it four?
Number four.
All right. Will you, as the proposed project developer?
Will you, as the proposed project developer, also be managing the operations, services envisioned in your conceptual plan? Have you estimated the number of construction-related and permanent jobs that your project will potentially generate?
Um, to answer the first part of that question, Dream Hotels would be the operator of it, and they would be the management company as part of being unscripted, that is their, their, their sub-brand. Um, Majestic and AF Canta would stay involved in the long-term of the project as equity holders and also on behalf of our investment partners. So, yes, we will be operating the building long-term. They will be doing the management of the hotel. The second half of your question.
I'm just, I'm sorry. Have you estimated?
Hit it.
Oh, the number of jobs. I think you answered that earlier. A hu- about a hundred permanent jobs on the, on the hotel. Um, on the number of construction jobs, we have not, we haven't finished estimating that, depending on the method of construction that we use.
Thank you, Mr. Buenaventura, okay. Open and equitable hiring practices are of great importance to us. What specific commitments are you willing to make? A, to hire from lo- the local workforce, B, utilize a project labor agreement for construction, and C, provide a labor peace agreement? So, uh, we'll start off with the local workforce.
Uh, with the local workforce, it's absolutely critical, because they are part of, the, the local community needs to be involved also, is the workforce, because they're part of what makes it being an essence of place, that they're helping bring it to life and being able to share that, that experience. So that's one of the important things. So yes, we're completely open and, and wanna be able to promote the local workforce, uh, in this project.
Okay, B, utilize a project labor agreement for construction?
Yeah, we're, we're factoring prevailing wage into our construction budget.
Okay. And what about providing a labor peace agreement?
Yeah, let me point out that.
Yes.
In New York City, we have seven hotels.
New York City.
In New York. Uh, of all seven, all seven are union hotels. So we work very closely with the union, uh, in New York um, and, uh, in other parts of the country.
So not only being built union, but being.
Operated union.
Operated union.
Yeah.
Cause that opens up a whole nother realm of people who can use your hotel.
Right.
All right. Uh, thank you.
The one last thing I wanted to say on the.
Well, we got one more question, though.
Oh, sorry.
No, but if you have something about employment, go ahead.
Well, no, I was gonna say, as far as the commitment on the employment side goes, is I think one of the things that you can take, um, as for assurances on that end, is that, you know, AF Canta is a female-owned company, Majestic is a Mexican-American gay-owned company, and Dream is a Indian-American-owned hotel company. So we're very, as far as diversity side goes, it's something that we're very open in and practice on a daily basis. So I know that's, um, an issue with some companies in today's world, um, but we wanna promote that open fairness and equality on that side.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Christensen, would you kindly provide, now, this was for the hotels only, and this is actually a good one, so I'll leave that to Councilmember Christensen.
Okay. Of the current transient occupancy tax in Daly City is ten percent. The city is currently considering a ballot measure to increase it to twelve percent or fourteen percent mirroring, mirroring either the San Mateo County numbers or the San Francisco numbers. How would such an increase impact your team's proposed hotel development, if at all?
We actually did it. We, we actually factored in, um, a twelve percent because of the comps that, um, we got, Councilwoman, um, Christensen. So we, we work our numbers accordingly, and I work with the Dream Hotel Group, um, and their, um, finance team, and th- those are the numbers that they got. So we have to work off of a twelve percent on the, uh.
So if, uh, so the question is, if ours was thirteen or fourteen percent, would that be a problem for you?
I don't think.
I mean, we haven't decided yet what we're gonna go for.
You know, I don't think it would necessarily be a problem. I think it would certainly from a, this is for your transit occupancy tax. It certainly may dissuade consumers coming into the market space from wanting to spend that, because it's not necessarily us paying. We're collecting it on your behalf.
Right.
Fourteen would probably be one of the highest I know, I know of.
Yeah, what is it in San Francisco these days?
That's fourteen.
And I believe that's the highest in the country, with New York being shortly behind it.
Yeah.
Um, LA is eleven percent. So it, does it exist? Yes, but it certainly has the potential to impact the city.
Right.
By turning people away.
Gotcha.
But we're happy to collect it for you.
Twelve you're solid with.
Yeah, the twelve, we're, and as I said, we're happy to collect it on your behalf, whatever it is.
Gotcha.
We can name it something else.
Tourism tax. Um, I just wanted to make a comment, and knowing how sorely needed is a hotel in Daly City, but going to other hotels and events, uh, we do need lots of ballrooms and space, but you folks are the experts, and based upon the ratio, as you made mention, rooms to meeting spaces, uh, two hundred and fifty sounds a little low to me, but I, you know, I'm hoping that, uh, can be worked out, uh, giving more, um, more credence to, uh, meeting spaces and events. You, you made mention earlier, you'll work with Duggans also, maybe you can share some space, and, you know, it's all good.
Collaborate with them.
And, uh, when you also made mention, two hundred and sixty-six a night, and if you build it, they will come, I wish you the best of luck. Because, uh.
Thank you, Mayor.
I hope they'll come.
You know, on, on the end of the, of the size of the banquet facilities, you know, that is, there is a ratio to it. I think that there is certainly conversations, if we were lucky enough to be able to proceed with you folks, that we could have to find a mutually beneficial arrangement to try and figure out what's the, uh, a more appropriate square footage to meet the city needs. But it does, from our side, it does need to be balanced, is that we do need to be able to have the rooms to be behind it, to support it. Cause we will be looking to bring in groups, not just from, um, the regional area, but also from outside of the region.
Absolutely.
Across the country.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other questions from my colleagues?
Nope.
All right, thank you so much. How are we doing, staff? We all right? You wanna keep going?
Oh, thank you.
Oh, yeah. The next hotel group.
All right, the, uh, next, uh, presentation would be, uh, Ares Hospitality.
And, um. Is it Nick?
Uh.
Might have to move.
Uh, Mr., I think it's Kevin, right? Ken?
Kevin. Ken, sorry. You may have to move for this presentation. There, or just wheel back.
Oh. Okay. Okay.
Make sure everybody can see.
We lost one. You wanna wait for the one to come back? We lost two.
Oh, you only lost one.
One, okay.
It'll be back.
Wanna go ahead, or what do you wanna?
Wait a minute.
We'll give him a, we'll give him thirty seconds. Thirty seconds. Time's up, okay, go ahead. Like the mayor said.
I mean, that door is there so we can sneak out in an emergency to take care of whatever business we might have and get back in here, so.
Unfortunately, I've been behind many a closed door in city council sessions, and I hate to recall.
May as well introduce ourselves.
Sure.
This is David Rose, and I'm Douglas Ayers, and, uh.
Welcome.
Happy to be here tonight.
Uh, you're Douglas Ayers?
Ayers, yes.
Oh.
Same name. But end with an S, Ayers.
Oh, Ayers, okay, thank you.
So we apologize. We had our, we had our, our technical marketing staff, uh, prepare a, 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 a back-to-back presentation with a couple of videos and slides, and your, your system doesn't allow, there's a firewall or something, doesn't allow it to play, and when it does, it's like a, an old Japanese movie where the, the music's playing and it's something else is happening. So we're gonna be playing the, the videos and stuff up here. Uh, I'm sorry, on this screen right here, and then the, the non-videos, just a normal, we'll be on the side. So I apologize for the, that. You wanna turn off those lights that you had on before? Yeah, whenever you're ready. Just making sure.
Makes it screen easier to see, yeah.
Did you guys, is that playing? Is the video coming on? It won't be up there, but is it on there?
Yes, it is now.
Turn that mic on.
A welcoming and comfortable environment to our guests. We do this by offering desirable amenities, such as complimentary high-speed internet and our pillow-top Dream Sleeper Beds. And complimentary evening receptions, parking, and full breakfast buffets at most of our locations. With locations in Orange County, the Inland Empire, Los Angeles, San Diego, and the Central Coast. Each hotel is distinctive, but you'll find a home-like lobby, clean surroundings, and top-notch service at each location. Ayers is a culture of caring, from the moment you check in to the moment you check out. We care. Book your next day with us today.
This is a very quick slide presentation. It's a hundred-year-old company, been in the hotel business for about thirty-five years. Uh, Mr. Ayers over here is the fourth generation. You'll see we have twenty-two hotels throughout Southern California, with the latest, uh, full-service resort being in, uh, Paso Robles, which is right here. It's a hundred, a hundred and seventy-seven-room hotel. This is our, our Ayers Rewards program, such as Marriott Rewards, et cetera, our Hilton Honors. This is gonna be a, a very select, uh, of about six or seven of our nineteen select service hotels. This is in Orange, California, very close to Disneyland, across from UC Irvine Medical Center. It's got a hundred and twenty-eight rooms, meeting space for fifty, as well as a full-serve, uh, onsite restaurant. This is Ayers Hotel, right by Disneyland. It's actually across the street from Mahano Center, where the Ducks play. Hundred and thirty-three individual suites. You notice that our public spaces are much more different and much more rich than most other hotels. This is our, uh, Hotel in Chino, a hundred and twenty-two suites and king suites. Once again, this, you notice the public space, very boutique, and then, some of them, they're even called the living room, cause it's a very family-friendly type of operation. This is in Fountain Valley, which is in Orange County, very aerospace-oriented. Um, once again, the, the public space, a hundred and twenty-seven rooms, meeting space for a hundred, and then onsite restaurant and bar. This is Mission Viejo and Spa. Once again, this is the public space, sixty-three suites, twenty-seven one-bedroom suites, a spa, a restaurant, and meeting space for a hundred and fifty. This is another hotel we have in Orange, actually fairly new. It's open about, what, two years?
Two years, yes.
You'll see a very, very different type of architecture throughout. This one has a Balinese feel. This is our newest and, you know, cutting-edge type of deal. We have two full-service hotels, one in Orange County by John Wayne. This is the flagship, I believe, two hundred and forty-eight guest rooms, two hundred and eighty-four, excuse me. Full-serve restaurant with a bar called La Chateau. Meeting space up to two hundred people, both indoor and outdoor, you'll see in a second. Very big on weddings. And we make, we make use of a lot of different spaces. Here's the wedding. You'll see it's very outdoor-oriented. Uh, it does get cold in Southern California by the beach as well. Uh, this is by LAX, a hundred and seventy-three rooms. This lobby is very big, picturesque, as far as weddings and stuff. On the staircase, you'll see in a second. Once again, very, the meeting space is, is a big deal. This is Matisse, full-serve restaurant, bar. There's different types of meetings, have an individual courtyard. We hold a lot of outdoor events. Like I said, very big in weddings. This is a very picture, if you're having a wedding there, you have to have your picture taken there. This is a full-service resort, uh, Doug envisioned about three or four years ago, opened about two years ago, called Alagretto, up in Paso Robles, full-service hotel, literally the nicest hotel in, in Paso Robles. It's on twenty acres of property. Uh, seven different types of varietal wines actually grown on-site. Um, you know, the architecture is very, very unique. Uh, something that Doug, uh, really sets apart is, he's very, very much involved with the community. He actually moved up there and lives there part-time now. This is Cello, the restaurant. If you like bacon, you've gotta go there for the bacon. It's phenomenal. Uh, this is the Alagretto. We have our own wine. Uh, the, the cab is fantastic. It's my favorite. Full-service spa. Meetings, once again, very unique opportunities for meetings, both indoor and outdoor. This is the Abbey, which is very much like a chapel, so it's very unique for the businesses. Won an award for platinum level in twenty sixteen. Once again, weddings play a huge part in all of our hotels, in, but being involved with the community. Some other picturesque, this is the actual, the, the vineyards that are grown on-site. And a little short video about the actual hotel chain, the, actually, Alagretto. And this, was the one on there playing?
No, it's on a different.
Listen, I'm, I'm talking faster than that one is.
Yes.
So I apologize for, you have a delay on yours up on the screen.
Yeah, the computer.
That one actually puts the video down. This is the Abbey or the chapel I spoke of, very big for private, private dining and weddings. Suites. So, thank you, that's very much it. The, we're a Southern California-based hotel chain, family-owned and operated, and we're looking to plant a flag in Northern California for our expansion, and we've chose Daly City as our first opportunity, if you'd, if you'd have us. So we're here to answer any questions you guys might have.
Thank you. All right, um, before we begin the questioning, any personal questions for my colleagues?
Can I ask a different question?
Sure, absolutely.
All right.
Okay.
Let's see, what do I have for you? The proposals outlined for each development site should produce benefits for both the proposed developer and the community. Please describe the community benefits and amenities that that project will provide if it is selected.
Well, I would say the one that, that I didn't hear addressed is the million to a million and a half dollars that we generated annually for the city, uh, in the form of TOT. I would tell you that ten percent is light, on the light side, that's about a million dollars a year, and I base that on a formula that I would tell you, it's very simple. Take the number of keys, times the rate that you'd be looking at, times three hundred and sixty-five days a year, times an average of seventy-two percent occupancy. If you go anybody above that, it's, it's really not relevant. And then times ten percent if you did ten percent. So if I did that at a two-hundred-dollar rate, which is extremely low, I'm staying at the Hampton Inn, I'm paying two hundred and seventeen. So, two hundred times what I just gave you is about a million dollars a year. We think the rate's gonna be, probably be closer to two fifty when you open in three years. So at the twelve percent, you're at about, just over a million and a half dollars a year. So that, that part is huge. You know, that's a big deal. Uh, I think twelve percent is very relevant. I can tell you, for example, I do a ton of work in Anaheim, it's fifteen percent. It's, as long as you're with the rest of the market, you don't wanna be over the market. You wanna be either at the market or below the market, to draw people to stay in your community.
Tax revenue, TOT. Follow-up question, jobs?
So, um, we've, we've, we've calculated that hotel employees would be between a hundred and a hundred and twenty-five.
Would you be willing to do a higher Daly City first?
Absolutely, no question. Uh, construction jobs, we estimate between two-hundred-and-fifty and three-hundred.
And what is your experience with, um, do you, or you pay prevailing wage on your, your projects? Current construction, we have one in Orange that we did, but typically, we do not pay prevailing wage on construction.
I'm the third, that's my dad. My dad's a fifty-year member of I W. My grandfather was an organizer, and he had fifty years of experience. So, the, we understand in this market, union, union involvement for, for the trades is very important, and a PLA, we don't, we don't have a problem with that.
I'm good.
Wow, you covered a lot there.
Sorry.
No, no, that's good.
Cover it, cover it again, if you want me to remember too?
Yes, uh, Ms. Christian.
If you are the suc, the successful proposer, what is the anticipated timeline for the project implementation, and how will it be financed? Equity, debt, or both?
So, um, I'll answer the last part first if I could. So, um, we're a privately-held corporation, family-owned and operated, like I said, five generations. Wait, are you the fifth or the sixth?
Fourth.
A fourth. He's sixty, so I gotta ask what time. Their children are just entering, so it's the fifth generation as well. So, we kinda took a little bit different tact on this, and I'm gonna answer your question a little bit more. We wanted to come in and basically work with the city staff, but also not just city staff, but the city council, the planning commission, all the area stakeholders, because I know how important that is, to understand what you guys see as what your needs are versus what we see our needs being imposed upon you. So, what, one of the things that we wanted to do is to, is to ga, is to gauge the community, whether that means a town hall meeting or something like that. And I have the wrong pointer here, sorry. So if you look right here, you know, we know that the site is fully entitled under the Pacific Plaza specific plan and the PUD. Um, we're also assuming that there's gonna have to be some sequo, you know, whether it's an MND or something along those lines. So we're assuming that's, that process, along with the design, is gonna take about twelve to eighteen months. Because once again, you have one town hall meeting, that becomes two town hall meetings with charrettes, et cetera. And then we also anticipate the construction would take about twenty-four to thirty months. That also includes the, the, the placement of what's called FFNE, which stands for Fixtures, Furniture and Equipment, and having people load that into the process. Is it, does that make sense?
Yep. Thank you.
All right.
And, and the financing?
That would be a, so in the financial world, we call it a capital stack. We have like caps stacking marbles on top of each other, or Lincoln Logs, or rectors, that's kinda how all of you are in the process. And we assume fifty-fifty. We assume, worst-case scenario, it's gonna be fifty-fifty. If it gets better, great, but that would be fifty percent equity, fifty percent debt.
Mr. President?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I mean, it, it was, uh, it, it was impressive to look at your, your video and your pictures, and I'm just wondering, is, are you more targeting this as sort of a resort, um, place to stay, or is it about, about, uh, business, uh, like the, you know, getting the, the conventions, the Silicon Valley-type business people to come to Daly City? What is your plan?
I see this as a, a corporate business and transient hotel. And, uh, yes, of course, if you have a meeting space, we've gotta get groups in there. There needs to be some more research about what can actually happen in that regards, of what meetings would actually really go there. And so I think, uh, I, I look at it as a corporate hotel. Of course, when I do any hotel, I do it, I put a lot of extra elements into it. And so I don't see it as a, as a resort at all. It is, I, I like to do corporate, high-end hotels.
Okay. And so the same question, how, how many stars or what is your, how do you classify your hotel as?
Oh, in the, like, Allegretto in Paso Robles is a four-plus star. Here, I see it as a three, three and a half, but generally, when I build a hotel, I, I build it so it looks like a four- or five-star hotel, has those amenities, has that feel, but is practical in the sense of, on, on the price side, so.
This is a Sunday-through-Thursday corporate hotel, and the Fri, the weekend becomes the community, where the community holds its weddings, its family gatherings, et cetera. It's almost impossible to operate a resort-type hotel unless you're in, you know, a resort location on the ocean, in the desert, in the mountains, et cetera. So we would view this as a, as a corporate-type hotel. But the, the Ayers chain is a boutique, is a boutique brand amongst themselves. If you're in Southern California, you're gonna see them everywhere. Our two full-service hotels, which is why we were so excited about this opportunity, Costa Mesa is right next to John Wayne Airport, Manhattan Beach is right next to LAX, you know, even though it may take us thirty minutes to drive to SFO, this becomes a very close, if you're not right there, you know, in that market, this is very close, you know, ten miles, nine miles to get to, to SFO, and with Bart, we move it very closely. So, this is what we're, this is the type of hotel we're proposing, that, you know, is two-hundred keys, this hotel's two-hundred-and-eighty-four, and it has a full-service restaurant, has the meeting space, uh, and then at LAX, and then once again, having the outdoor space for the, for the weddings. Uh, this is Manhattan Beach, which has a hundred and seventy-three keys, but once again, it's a full-service hotel, it's not a resort. But the reason I included Allegretto and the others is to show you, because we are our own brand, we could do the select service, which has either no, no meeting space or no restaurant, like a courtyard or the Hampton Inn, we can do the full-service restaurants like this one, and we could also do the resort. He has to look at himself in the mirror and say, how do I wanna spend my money, what type of hotel do I wanna build? Which is why I brought, I was so, to me, it was so important to wanna address the community needs. Do we think that we're gonna build a ten-thousand-square-foot meeting space that gets used, you know, at graduation time and one big meeting? No. But do we think we can provide you guys the benefits that, of our experience, to like I said, have a four-thousand-square-foot meeting space that holds two-hundred-and-eighty-four people for dinner and three-hundred-and-fifty for a theater-style event? That's why we wanna meet with the city to understand what the needs of the community are on the long-term basis. Because as, this was a, you know, thirty-plus-million-dollar endeavor, maybe even fifty-million-dollar endeavor, and we wanna make sure that our money is spent correctly so that we're, you know, a long-term relationship.
Out of, out of the hotels that you have now, out of all the hotels, what is sort of the closest that you envision Daly City's hotels gonna be?
Geographic, or?
No, as in, style, yeah.
Costa Mesa or, or Ma, or Manhattan Beach?
But I, I would say that if you look at the decor in these, this is a little, it was designed to be that very European look, and I, I don't see doing that up here, I see doing much more contemporary, uh, cleaner, yeah. I mean, traditionally, we've have been known for our European-style boutique hotels. But, uh, what we're currently doing is more contemporary, like in Chula Vista and in Orange and in, uh...
What was the one with, that had a lot of wood, um, paneling?
That is the brand-new one that's gonna be, on the outside or the inside?
Inside.
Okay, well, they all have, they all have what's called the library or the, or the living room, which is the main area. This is a brand-new, this one is orange, so it's very, literally Asian, it's got a Balinese feel to it. Uh, and then some of them, Fountain Valley.
That one, oh, it's that.
This is Fountain Valley, it just opened, it's a two-story lobby. Once again, I keep using your pointer, not my pointer, there's no, I'm pointing and nothing's happening. You know, so it's, it's an elevator, it's a two-story lobby, like, I'm, I haven't even had anything to drink yet. And, you know, so it's, it's literally got, it's a two-story, and this is, you know, it's got a, a modern fireplace, whereas some of the older ones, as in Manhattan Beach, it's got a two-story lobby, but it's got a very traditional, all stone, you know, imported stone from Belgium, I think, or?
No, it's French.
From French. So it's got a very different feel, and this market had a very different feel, whereas literally you go, I'm gonna use that, this slide instead of that slide. You know, see, this is a very, this is a very, you know, very different style, this is, that's Matt, this is brand-new, and you go to there, and it's got a very, it's got a very, and like I said, literally, I think one of the, one of the brothers went to, went to Bali surfing, and he came back and wanted to have a brand-new Balinese-inspired lobby.
Did you say that you're part of the Hilton chain?
No, no, no. This Ayers is family-owned and operated, we own twenty-two hotels from the, the Central Coast down to San Diego. We're, we're independent, we're an independent boutique company.
Just put our last name as the name.
Got it, okay. Okay.
Okay, I, I was taking a few notes. Getting back to labor, uh, you said PLA, yes.
Not a problem.
But I thought I heard no prevailing wages.
No, well, as far as, as, the, the prevailing wage, we're assuming that's, that's, that's the case no matter what, up here. We, we assume nor, we assume two things, Northern California's gonna be about twenty-five percent more, just because it's in Northern California, you cross the line and, and everything goes up. Um, and then also with the, with the prevailing wages, um, you know, once again, understanding the, the importance of the union's environment.
Uh, labor peace agreement.
That becomes a little bit of a different issue, because we're a privately-held corporation, we're not a franchise. So if we do it in one, it's my understanding that it might affect all of them, so we'd have to address that with the city and get a great understanding of that.
Okay. And you've already addressed, you understand the occupancy tax?
Yes.
Because we're gonna have something coming up on the ballot, uh, later on.
We're happy to assist you with that regard. Been, been involved with many cities doing, uh, increased TOT.
Okay. And, um, will you, as a project developer, also be managing the property? Was that asked?
Yes.
I don't think that was asked.
We do, we own.
Okay.
Yeah, we do our own construction and management, and, yes.
Okay.
And I think the one we didn't ask.
Yes.
You do understand we're not giving you any money.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
There's no financial subsidy from the city.
We, we, we're very well, I mean...
Make that fair.
I've worked on both sides of the counter, we're, you know, in the old days, you used to call it a three-three, four-three, three study that would be required. We understand that you're not allowed to give away public subsidies.
Yeah.
Uh, and if you do, it requires a whole different, a whole different count of worms, but we are in that, that understanding.
Great.
Public safety. In your hotel, anything towards assisting public safety, like fire, uh, equipment or defibrillators?
Well, we have with the new laws, there's, there's a myriad of things that we have to do, and we just have to abide by code. And so we just, that's what we do.
Now, I don't, uh, Ms. Martel, I don't, maybe you can answer this question, even if it is by law, does it, the law also require to have maybe a few employees on-site who know how to use these things? The defibrillators?
No.
No, okay, so, it's just there in case somebody shows up.
Uh, the, yes, most likely, uh, emergency personnel would utilize it immediately upon arriving on the scene.
Right.
And I would assume that the hotel itself would have employees who are trained to use, uh, the, that equipment until public safety arrives.
Okay, 'cause you know, having a little experience with that, me being a big guy, you always have to pull the plug when you put one of those on me. So, I think that's very important.
We, I mean, we, we are, we are, we are, because we're a community, but we're, we're family-owned and operated, we understand that it's a part of the community, so whatever it takes with fire, public safety, et cetera, we wanna be involved.
Thank you so much. All right, that's all the questions I have, anything else from my colleagues?
Okay. Right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Sylvester.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Salam.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Salam.
I can get it.
Oh, walungan man.
Can you make me some toro?
You like that, huh?
Love toro.
Oh, yeah, we'll get you some.
He actually can.
Yeah. Sample in the man.
Lupia's okay, but only lupia that has vegetables or beef, I don't like the pork, but nothing else. I'm set?
Yeah.
Where are you going to dinner? I wanna eat with you guys.
I'll get you some dinner, go on, let's see if you like that. All right, thank you, sir. All right. Let's see, who do we have now? I'm sorry, Ms. Christian?
Equity Residential is next.
Okay, Equity Residential. Equity Residential, Site Number Three. And hello, good evening. All right.
I don't progress you forward, then, thank you back.
Great.
All right, good evening, council members.
Evening.
We're honored to be here tonight. My name is Drew Solins, and this is my colleague, John Hire, we're representing Equity Residential to discuss the future development of Site Three. We assume you've read our RFQ response, so we'll keep our remarks brief and move on quickly to any questions you might have. Obviously, we're proposing a multifamily apartment building to complement the existing property we own next door. And we're here tonight to focus on our qualifications, who we are, what our capabilities are, and some of what we've recently built in the Bay Area. So, who's Equity Residential? We're one of the largest multifamily real estate investment trusts in the United States, focused on six urban and high-density markets, including Boston, New York, Southern California, and the Bay Area. The company's been in existence since the late nineteen-sixties and is, but has involved a great deal since then. We're publicly, publicly traded on the New York Stock Exchange under the ticker symbol EQR. The company went public in nineteen ninety-three. Uh, we pride ourselves on having the highest walk scores in the multifamily sector, meaning our properties are, on average, the most walkable to public transportation, shopping, dining, and other neighborhood amenities. We think this has become much more important to our target market in the, in recent years. Uh, here in the Bay Area, we own and manage five, fifty-five properties in communities stretching from Sausalito to North San Jose and all the way out to Dublin, totaling almost fourteen thousand units. We're long-term owners as opposed to merchant builders, sorry, this is, uh, a map of our properties around the Bay Area. Uh, we're long-term owners as opposed to merchant builders, uh, who develop and flip to an out-of-town institutional owner. That means we have a strong incentive to get it right the first time, and we're very thoughtful about how and what we build. Uh, as noted above, we have owned eighty-eight hillside next door to Site Three since two thousand and eleven, so we know the neighborhood as well as anyone, maybe not as well as you, uh, and we have a strong interest in making it even better. Indeed, it's the reason we're here today. So, moving on to our capabilities, we have specialized investment and development teams who are headquartered in each region for the Bay Area, that's John and me, plus our colleagues, we have a large team. Uh, we live here, we are the people you would deal with on a day-to-day basis. We also have our own regionally-based construction management team. Uh, we're a flat and flexible organization, we manage our investments locally, and for major decisions, our team is in constant communication with our senior leadership of the company. So we are nimble, and we are able to problem-solve and make decisions very quickly. Uh, we have one of the strongest balance sheets in the industry, we have a very strong credit rating, and this has enabled us to secure a two-billion-dollar line of credit, which we use to fund acquisitions and development. So we don't need equity partners or construction lenders, which makes John and my job a lot simpler. Now we'll look at a few of our recent local developments. Broadly speaking, our team has built, uh, almost three thousand units in the Bay Area in the last five years, and we are in process of developing, delivering another four-hundred-and-fifty units this year. Here are three of the properties we showcased in our RFQ response. We're very proud of all our recent developments, and we'd love to tour you through any of them sometime. This is Potrero Ten Ten in San Francisco's Potrero Hill neighborhood, designed by David Baker Architects. It comprises four-hundred-and-fifty-three units and two buildings. It was completed in two thousand and sixteen and is now fully stabilized. Ten Ten includes twelve thousand rentable square feet of ground-floor retail, and features a very cool one-acre public park that we built and are maintaining, with features like public art, climbing structures for kids, and a dog run. The total cost of Potrero Ten Ten was approximately two-hundred-and-twenty-four million dollars. Uh, this is Three Hundred Forty Fremont Street in San Francisco's Rincon Hill neighborhood, designed by Handel Architects. This is three hundred and forty-eight units in a forty-story building, also completed in early two thousand and sixteen and now fully stabilized. Uh, Three Hundred Forty Fremont features an amenity floor that comprises all of Level Nine, including a private club, a fitness center, and a huge outdoor terrace. Most of the tower units have amazing views of the Bay Bridge or city skyline. Three Hundred Forty Fremont was built for approximately two-hundred-and-eighty-seven million dollars. And this last project is Eight Five Five Brandon, also in San Francisco and designed by David Baker's office. Eight Five Five is three buildings comprising four hundred and forty-nine units with sixteen thousand, two hundred rentable square feet of ground-floor retail, and the project is being delivered in two phases this year. The first phase was recently completed, and it's leasing at a fast pace. The second phase is on track to be delivered in late fall. Now that it's open, we think eight-five-five Brandon may feature some of the finest amenities we have in our portfolio. One of the highlights is a private club room with an operable wall of glass that opens onto a landscape courtyard featuring redwood trees and picnic areas, uh, surrounded by boulders. So in addition to our San Francisco properties, we've recently opened new projects in San Jose and Emeryville. And like I said, we're proud of all of them. You can get a sense for how we are working to meet and exceed the expectations of our sophisticated residents, who are looking for an amenity-rich lifestyle and walkable neighborhoods close to transit and entertainment. Uh, for those of you who aren't quite as familiar with the history of the site, John will provide a little more color. We really appreciate your time.
Great. Council, thanks for having us this evening. Um, as Drew had mentioned, we acquired the site in September of two thousand eleven from Oliver McMillan. They were the second developer to work on that project. The first developer, um, hit some hard times in the two thousand eight, two thousand nine period. Um, it went to the bank. Oliver McMillan's group acquired the asset. They did some design changes and finished and completed the project. It's comprised of ninety-five, uh, units, mostly two-bedroom units and just a four, um, one-bedroom units on it. What we would be proposing is to round out the total project by coming in and adding studios and one-bedrooms in the new phase tied to the existing, with approximately a hundred units, somewhere between ninety to a hundred and fifteen. We have to work through the, the designing a little bit more diligently on that, but, um, that would give you a nice project of approximately two hundred units, um, right at the top of the hill, Daly City. Yes, I was around when that was a very famous commercial. We've worked with staff over the years. I've stayed in contact, um, with, with staff and Patricia, um, as we went through the process of the R D A, um, diss- being dissolved and coming back through and working with a new disposition plan with the state. We actually had a first right of refusal when we acquired the asset for a period of three years afterwards. Uh, unfortunately, during that period of time, the R D As were dissolved by, by the state and went back, and we've kind of been in limbo. So consistently, we have been very excited about the opportunity of continuing to, to work with the city and build out that corner to complete the full project and, and really create a, a solid footing at the top of the hill there. One thing I wanted to add is that, um, currently, uh, E Q R, um, is your eighth-largest, uh, tax contributor. With the completion of, um, the second phase, we would move up to your sixth-largest, uh, tax provider to the city. Any questions, folks? All right, thank you. Um. Uh, we'll go right into the questions and leave the other, other questions that, uh, council may have. Mr. Gangone, you did so well the last time. Would you go anywhere?
The proposals outlined for each development site should produce benefits for both the proposed developer and the community. Please describe the community benefits and amenities that your product will provide if it is selected. You can just go through.
It's obviously a very prominent site, uh, at the top of John Daly Boulevard, and it's a, you know, prominent corner. And I think one of the things that we would consider, you know, with you all is, you know, what, what is the kind of architectural statement that's being made there? Cause there's obviously an opportunity on such an important corner. Um, another obvious one is that, you know, we're gonna be paying the affordable housing fee. Um, and then I think last is that we would have, you know, you know, upwards of a hundred, you know, new residents living, working, and playing in, in Daly City. I mean, I think that's really, but, you know, we want to do this as a, as a process with the city and, 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 and design it.
The other benefit, as I mentioned earlier, is the tax benefit that comes with that.
I know that there's, I don't think there's a way that we could ensure that Daly City residents get a kind of a, well, not so much a discount, but a leg up, just if these things are gonna go, uh, if they're gonna be very, uh, it's gonna be a high demand for them. I would kind of like to see Daly City residents kind of get the first crack at it. I mean, I don't know if that's even legal, is it?
It's not.
You know, anything like that, right? We did the Daly City thing the other day, well, we do it the other, but, okay, you're creating jobs, right? I mean, people are gonna be working.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Good. All right.
Thank you.
Want me to go too?
Sure.
Uh, if you are the successful proposer, what is the anticipated timeline for the project implementation, and how will it be financed? Equity, debt, or both?
Uh, I mean, I think the timeline would be, you know, there's, um, you know, there's a discussion to be had about the entitlements and what would have to happen with the zoning, because I think it might have to get, go through a rezoning process. So I, I can't really speculate on how long that might take. You guys might have a much better idea about that, but after that period, we would expect that the, kind of pre-development time period would be six months to get the drawings done and get the permits. Uh, and then at that point, it would probably be about eighteen months until we could deliver the first units.
So it would be eighteen months of construction?
It'd be about eighteen months of construction, yeah.
And to address your, your question about the financing.
Mm-hmm.
We do everything cash. We build off a check. We have enough properties nationally that we generate enough income plus a two-billion-dollar line of credit. We're basically a thirty-five-billion-dollar company. So we don't have to go to banks to buy or build.
Hiring practices, um, prevailing wage, um, labor agreements for construction. Are you amenable, uh, to that or a P L A?
We have historically not signed those agreements. Um, we are a company that we put things out to bid, and we get the lowest bid. Realistically, on a project that's a type-one construction, which is high-rise essentially, sixty-five to seventy-five percent of the trades that will be working on that project will be union trades. So we, we do get a significant participation with the trades in the union shops when we do build type-one construction.
Uh, for clarification, if I may, how many units? I, I heard, uh, studios and one-bedrooms.
Correct.
So how many units total? You don't have to tell me how many studios or how many one-bedrooms, but altogether?
Well, there's ninety-five existing units in the first existing phase that's there currently.
That are predominantly two-bedrooms.
And those are all two-bedrooms except for one-bedroom units.
Is that right next door?
That's right next door.
Yeah.
Eighty-eight Hillside?
Eighty-eight Hillside, correct.
Okay, got it. Okay.
So that, the corner piece would be made up of all studios and studios, one-bedrooms, and micros potentially.
Micros?
Micro units, which are smaller units, about three hundred square feet.
Ooh, that is small.
That's what's called a micro. I just learned something new today.
Well, we actually own a property in San Francisco called Seventy-seven Bluxum, and the average square foot.
Very familiar with that one.
Is two hundred and thirty square feet.
Wow.
That happens to be located a block from the train station.
That's correct.
So most of our residents actually live in the city. They don't live in their apartment. They just want a place to sleep at night. They work down in Silicon Valley. San Francisco is their living room, and they go home at night and sleep.
So, uh, staff would be able to advise, uh, the parking requirements. It's different, not, it's not like one per resident, or maybe San Francisco point-two-five for every one and.
If San Francisco had their way, Mayor, we would provide no parking.
All right, well, I'll leave that staff.
And there's plenty of parking existing in the current structure.
All right. Um, and, uh, any potential for retail on the bottom?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Brunner.
I don't have any.
Oh, no, there's, there's.
Oh, there is? Which question?
Uh, we haven't done, uh, three and four. I think I know the answer to number three, but.
All right, I'll ask four. Will you, as, as the proposed project developer, also be managing the operations, services envisioned in your conceptual plan? Have you estimated the number of construction-related and permanent jobs that your project will potentially generate?
To answer the first question, yes. We, we own and operate all of our assets nationwide. So everything is done in-house by Equity Residential. We have over five thousand employees nationwide, primarily in six cities, three on the West Coast and three on the East Coast. To answer your question about jobs, um, during the construction phase, my guess is there probably be two hundred to three hundred, um, people working on-site during that eighteen-month period of time. Tapered in the front, larger in the middle, tapered off at the end.
Now, uh, one of my colleagues mentioned earlier about putting information out. So are these, these are not going to be rentals? These are gonna be for sale?
These are all rentals.
Oh, all rentals?
All rentals, yes. Equity Residential only does rental product. Eighty-eight Hillside is all rental.
And Ms. Martel and staff, so there's a certain amount put aside for affordability?
Yes. Yes, there, there would be under.
All right.
And we accept that. We understand that.
Okay. I think you've already answered this, but I'll ask it anyway. The city intends to sell the development properties at fair market value, not involving any financial subsidy. Does your proposal reflect this understanding? If not, what is the expectation? Now, I heard you say you've got.
It does reflect that. We understand there is no contribution from the city.
Gotcha. Thank you. Okay, I don't have anything further.
Question.
Yes, Ms. Christiansen.
Um, I've known a number of people who've lived at Hillside eighty-eight and, um, have expressed concerns to me that at night and on the weekends and on holidays, there's not management staff available when some kind of problem comes up. Um, and that there are a very limited number of staff people, um, like in the office or who do you call when something breaks, you know, or the toilet wrecks or something? So, um, I'd like to hear your side of that.
Sure. Um, for a property that's ninety-five units, we typically have two people on-site, one, well, I'm gonna clarify, we have two people in the office, which is a manager and a leasing consultant, and we have one maintenance supervisor on-site, and that's every day of the week.
And that's twenty-four hours a day?
No, no.
Okay, there's the problem.
Very few rental properties in Northern California have a staff, that's on-staff twenty-four hours a day. Every resident does have phone numbers to call in case of emergency. We have people that are on-call twenty-four-seven to answer those emergency calls, and they will respond within forty-five minutes to an hour maximum. Most of the people, though, we have them positioned around the Bay Area, they're within fifteen minutes away.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The, excuse me, the studios and the, uh, was it micro-units?
Yes, sir.
Just like. I, I know folks just want a place to put their head down, but, uh, what about any sort of community gathering room?
Yes, we will, we will have a club room.
Right.
We have a fitness center in the property currently.
Don't, don't mention fitness. I know, go ahead. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
But we will have a community room. We'll, we'll have a rooftop, um, area.
Okay.
Barbecue areas, dog spa, um.
Dogs, okay.
It's amazing. You'll, you'd be amazed how many people have pets in the rental, in rental market these days.
Yep.
Thank you.
But yes, we'll have a full accoutrement of amenities.
Thank you. I have no further comments.
Well, we thank you very much for the opportunity to present to you, and we look forward to working with you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Question I have for staff, is this, um, is it zoned for either residential or business or?
Um, no, this is currently a planned development, and this particular site was zoned to have seventy-four thousand square feet of office with ground floor retail. So an all-residential proposal would require a modification to that planned development.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right, next we have Northeast Medical. Northeast Medical Services. I'm calling it Services.
Northeast Medical Services.
Cause it said, devices. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Good evening. Hi, uh, my name is Johnson Wong. I'm the Chief Financial Officer at Northeast Medical Services in San Francisco. Um, I brought along a team with me. I have our architect Frank Fung. Behind me, I have our Chief Medical Officer, Dr. Kenneth Ten, Ten, uh, our lead physician, our Eastmore site, Dr. Helen Wong, and our Facilities Manager, Mr. Wayland Chu, who's been a resident of Daly City for about twenty years. Um, and we really welcome the opportunity to explain NIMs to, to the board, to the council. Uh, just a little bit about NIMs itself. We're a nonprofit organization, outpatient clinic. We started in nineteen sixty-eight. We currently operate in twelve county, twelve clinics in three counties of San Francisco, San Mateo, and Santa Clara. Last year, we saw sixty-five thousand, uh, patients and had about two hundred and sixty-five thousand encounters. The majority of our patients, sixty-five percent of our population is Medi-Cal, about fifteen percent is Medicare, so about eighty-five percent, probably between the old and the poor, which we serve. Our current, uh, headquarters is at fifteen-twenty Stockton Street in the North Beach area in San Francisco. But you guys, I think I've talked to you, we just recently purchased a future administrative site over at twenty-one-seventy-one Janipacera, and what we're gonna do is we're gonna consolidate all of our, uh, our back offices, and it'll be about a hundred and fifty employees, we think, by the end of three years at Janipacera site. Um, just a current, uh, some ideas about our current partnerships. We were, we have a current, uh, partner with Health Plan San Mateo, and one of their big, uh, pushes to us is to expand in North County. Uh, we're also working on a, a partnership with Seating Hospital for a residency program, and we're really working hard with that, with, uh, with the blessing of the health plan. Um, just a quick site, a picture of our, uh, Eastmore Avenue site. Um, uh, Dr. Wong could talk a little bit more, but basically, our, our Eastmore site is a, a one-shop, uh, what we call one-stop shop, uh, where we have adult medicine, pediatrics, and pharmacy, lab, behavioral, and health education services. Uh, currently, we have about thirty employees there. Uh, last year, we had about six, six thousand patients at the Eastmore site, which about seventy-two percent are below the hundred and thirty-eight percent federal poverty level. Um, one of the big issues that we have at the clinic right now is that we have access issues. So what we're looking for is we're looking for additional site, um, and that's one of the main reasons we're looking at the site on top of the hill, Daly City. This is a drawing that we have, um, but really, I'm gonna let Frank talk a little bit more about the particulars, but basically, from summary-wise, forty-six thousand square feet medical outpatient facilities, where we have medical, dental, optometry, and radiology, and laboratory services. Uh, we're also having about eight thousand square feet of retail space on the bottom, and at the end of the day, we hope to have about fifty local jobs, and we're committed, as an organization at NIMs, to use union labor during construction. Um, our projected timeline is about twenty-four months, and I think I wanna leave you guys with a, a last comment, that all of our projects are self-funded. Um, here's two of our, two of our projects over on San Bruno Avenue and on Noriega Street. That's what our projects look like. But our board, um, they don't like debt, so they tell us, if you're gonna start a job, we're gonna finish a job, we're not gonna use debt. So that's one of the board mandates to us that we like to carry forward. I'm gonna, uh, pass it on to Frank. He can discuss the project in a little more detail for us.
Just to give you an idea of some of our thinking, uh, given the fact that NIMs may be relatively due to, uh, Daly City, we wanted to show some of our thoughts with respect to this particular site and their program. So my discussion will be in three parts. First is just the site itself. Secondly, to talk a little bit about the program development that's there. And third, to highlight some of what we see are planning and urban design issues. The site is bounded by, uh, three streets. It's, uh, Mission, uh, John Daly, and then Hillside. It's a irregular site. It starts, uh, a similar width to the adjacent, uh, eighty-eight Hillside property, tapers significantly, and additionally, the, the elevation drops significantly from Hillside down to Mission. What's proposed is a five-level structure, uh, ground floor being commercial to, uh, continue the pedestrian-related commercial of Mission Street. A particular, uh, element of NIMs being here is that they could ensure that the commercial will be filled instead of left empty. What they can do is if the, uh, marketplace doesn't quite, uh, come for this particular site, they can move two of their retail units involving pharmacy and optometry into the commercial space to create pedestrian traffic and to enhance, uh, that corner. Second level would be the parking to, uh, and mechanical spaces that would, uh, support the structure. Uh, third, fourth, and fifth would be the medical clinic itself. As you can see, uh, in terms of some of the site analysis, the sections indicate the differences in elevation and the size of the structure. Recognizing the confluence of three streets, this is a fairly prominent corner. All right, they get, we're looking at creating a visual terminus. We're looking at creating something that will stand out, uh, as a, uh, in terms of the site. In addition, related to the, uh, site, the topography, and as we're going to, we've decided to look at terracing the building. Uh, this building will be parallel on both sides, both streets, both Mission and Hillside. It terraces. It's creating a series of outdoor, uh, uh, effects for the patients and staff. Uh, we're talking about, uh, creating a relative. We're talking about creating a relatively narrow building masses that would allow the use of daylighting. It will allow air and light to, to the staff and patients. This is reflected, as you see in the, the sketches that are shown there. There are, one additional thing is the opportunity for open space that occurs both at the corner and potentially at the, near the entry off Hillside. That would require a little bit further study, but it's something that NIMs has shown an interest to.
We're, we're open to any questions, to any of us, our operations, about NIMs, whatever you'd like to know.
Thank you so much. I'm gonna start off first this time. In seeing your diagrams, I am assuming that we will, if you're the successful, we will get an EIR because, you know, traffic on Hillside can be horrendous coming later on in the future. I guess I'm kinda directing this to staff. I don't, I don't know what would happen if they approved. We would work on getting all of that.
We, we would have to do some level of environmental review. However, it is important to note that this site is already entitled for seventy-four thousand square feet, and EIR was already done. So, we would probably have to refresh some studies, either do an EGDEC or get supportive studies that would support an, an exemption from CEQA. And basically, they would provide supportive studies to show that they do not show a significant impact, and then potentially, they could be exempted.
Thank you. Now, I, I've been asking questions about the union all night, and I saw in your slide presentation, you will be using union contractors. But I've asked this question of mostly everyone about utilizing a PLA agreement for construction.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm really not familiar with.
Uh, project labor agreement is like you agree, come together with the folks who's gonna be doing the construction and say, well, you're gonna pay this much. I, I guess it pertains to wages and the time, like, they're not to work over a certain number of hours.
I think they're committed that the construction would be fully a union job.
Okay, all right.
All of our, all of our larger projects have already been, been jobs.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, I'll leave it open. It looks like most of the questions were answered, but if any council member has any specific? You said you folks have the cash and ready to go. Your board tells you, hey, don't start the project unless you're willing to pay for it and get it going.
Yeah.
So, okay, so that question is answered. I think that was question number two. Debt, equity, or both? Yes.
You might wanna explore number one.
Okay. The proposals outlined for each development site should produce benefits for both you, the developer, and the community. Can you describe what community benefits you see and the amenities that your project would provide? If it is selected.
As I said, the majority of our current patients right now at the Eastmore site, seventy-two percent of them are below the hundred-and-thirty-eight percent poverty level.
Yeah.
Which is basically, you know, we're at Medi-Cal or below. So, any new sites, we, we would anticipate at least the same amount, proportionate amount of assist, of, of population. One of the things that we worked about.
I'm gonna ask you to speak up just a little bit.
Sorry about that. One of the things that, that the Health Plan San Mateo has asked us to do is increase our access in the whole North County. And so, we're trying to accommodate with that and partner with them. May I ask Dr. Chai?
So, we're very committed to serve the underserved, so we actually have a lot of patients who are not insured. Besides, you know, if they have Medi-Cal, which is really the poor, and really, we have a lot of patients in the covered California as well as uninsured patients. So, that's our mission, really, to serve the uninsured and, you know, provide comprehensive care with one-stop shop, having pharmacy. And just to give you some scale, we have over fifty, eighty physicians with various specialty primarily, primarily primary care to take care of over sixty-six thousand patients. In San Francisco, our main site is over sixty thousand square foot footage. And in our San Jose site, we just actually will complete a sixty thousand square footage clinic for the Santa Clara clinic, county as well.
Okay, and you're also close to transit. I can see accessibility, which you're trying to do.
Actually, the site works really, really nice for us in terms of having Bart, Muni, and Samtrans converging on that site.
Yes.
The population, where a lot of our, our patients are, are from a zip code, and that zip code around there is, is, is really good for us.
Ah, zip code, okay. Three, again, fair market value. You have no problems with the property being sold at fair market value? And you're not asking the city for any financial help in your project?
That's correct. We're not asking the city for anything.
But I, I think I just wanted to let you know that we are nonprofits. We're very different from other organizations who's, who's come before you tonight. So, we believe to, to bring the best care to the patient regardless of ability to pay, and that is our mission statement.
Wow. Thank you, doctor. Anyone else have any?
I can see that, that, that many of your patients are gonna come by bus.
Yes.
And so, that is like the perfect location for you guys, transportation-wise, yeah. Little more difficult at your other Daly City site, transportation-wise, yeah.
This is, a question is not here on the list, but I think it's one that should be asked. Daly City does a lot in its outreach to the community, and I appreciate you wanting to address the lower poverty, poverty folks who can't afford the care. But how about vice versa in doing outreach to the community, like community health fairs at the various events that we have? Either at the high school, whether it's a cafe, doleger, which consists of a large, a segment of the senior population. Is that a possibility, to be involved in the community in that regard?
Oh, yeah, definitely. We have, I actually been outreach into the schools, to the community, the senior centers. You know, that's, you know, fairs. We do free glucose testing, blood pressure measuring, just for early detection of chronic diseases. You know, we really believed in preventive care and really to detect the disease at the earlier stage. So, I think we have a lot of work. We work closely with San Mateo, have B-free. As you know, a lot of Asian Pacific Islanders have chronic hepatitis B, and that is a silent killer. So, we go out to the fairs. We withdraw blood and really, to really help peo- people to really become more aware of the disease that's in the community.
You know, you know, Mary, you were talking about the benefits of what we bring to the community. And what we bring from a preventive care standpoint is we keep patients out of the hos- of the ER. We, we, you know, we extend, that, that's what we do. That's our mission. And that's the, I, I don't know if you see the dollar benefit of that right now. You won't see it, but that's what we kinda bring to the table.
That is excellent, and I, and I also believe that education is the key also. You're trying to keep us baby boomers going, but then it's the millennials and the younger ones who should be educated as to good health as well. So, I think that's very important as well. Okay? Thank you so much, and my colleagues.
Yeah. What, what hours are you gonna be operating?
Our? We talk about our current site at Eastmore. We haven't really discussed what we're gonna do with the site, but at the Eastmore site, it's pretty simple.
So, currently, we are at our current Eastmore site. We're open at eight-thirty to five o'clock on Mondays through Fridays. And we're open currently every first, third, and fifth Saturday at those same hours as well.
On Saturday as well?
First, third, and fifth.
Oh. Okay, so in those months, we have five Saturdays you're open.
Yes.
It took me a while to get that, okay.
I just worked this past Saturday, so.
Do you have, do you have like an urgent care where people walk, can walk in?
At this time, no, but we are looking into planning on opening one in San Francisco.
I think, you know, for us, it's mainly to have enough providers, and actually, a lot of our providers right now do have same-day access. Right now, we're just really being restrained by the room. We have outgrown our Eastday, uh, Eastmore site. So, we need really more space for, to take care of patients, to offer more services, which we think is really important. So, right now, to answer your question, we do have same-day access for urgent care issues. Actually, I would say probably thirty percent of our patients are same-day. They come in same-day with the urgent issues.
Okay. And, you know, I, I understand you bringing a lot in terms of taking care of the, particularly the, the people who are of low income and they can't afford things like that. But I'm, I'm curious about, what is it that you will? Do you contribute in, in any financial way to the city, to the tax, to the, what, what kind of obligations will you have to paying for being in the city?
I think one of the things that we're going to, to contribute is with that retail space on the bottom. We're gonna contribute sales, tax dollars off of the retail sites.
The optometry and the pharmacy.
They're required to have a business license as well, so they would pay business license tax.
Okay. Okay, and then.
And they would be creating, as they mentioned, fifty new jobs.
Yeah, I, Frank did remind you, we're gonna be moving about a hundred-and-fifty of our employees at the twenty-one-seventy-one Janipacera site too.
I see. And, and so the, you, 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 I think you said you're serving approximately six thousand patients. You expect to meet that six thousand or more at this new location?
Yeah, if we have a, if we have a new location, we'll be, we'll be for sure to increase our, our population.
You know, is, is your parking any different from that site to this site?
Parking at Eastmore versus, Frank, maybe I can ask you, are, are the parking at the current site?
Actually, I don't know your current site.
No, I'm sorry, at the, at six-four-one.
You mean in terms of what we're providing here?
Yes, yes.
The second floor will accommodate, I see, up to twenty-two parking spaces. And the ratio of that in terms of, to the amount of square footage and programs is similar to their other sites.
Does that include calculating your, the employees that are gonna be there?
Yes.
If I may, the current agreement on this site is that they would have access to the parking garage at eighty-eight Hillside. There's a level of parking that hasn't been finished out, so the developer would have an obligation to finish that out. There was also a requirement that the existing parking structure get expanded for thirty-nine spaces. But I believe this proposal is foregoing that and including twenty-two spaces in their building. But this building's much smaller than what was entitled originally.
I see, okay.
And if I may add, the bottom level of that parking is substantially lower than the site. It's, it's almost thirty feet lower than the, the site here.
I see.
We did take a quick look at that.
And your, this site is pretty level.
Level.
And I walk by it frequently.
And the commercial will be at grade.
Yeah, as opposed to which, we would be more successful at grade, whatever's there, yeah.
Oh, so around the back on the Hillside, that's probably like the second floor. And it's like they're building, I see, something like a Kaiser in San Francisco when they get there. All right.
Thank you very much.
All right. Any other questions, my colleagues?
Yeah.
Mr. Winter, I can see that.
So, you know, there, obviously, what's going on in the country is there's talk about eliminating Obamacare and revising our whole healthcare system. What effect, if any, is this gonna have on your clinic?
I, I think, you know, obviously Affordable Care Act really transformed how, you know, the uninsured patients, how many people got insurance. I think we took care of more than sixty percent of our patients with uninsured before the Affordable Care Act. We will continue to provide that. We do get federal funding as well, so we will continue to achieve our mission to take care of the people who cannot pay or don't have insurance. So, I think that would be even more needed in this time of turmoil.
Okay, and how do you, how do you think you'll, you'll be able to do that?
I think, I think we leverage a lot of things. You know, we have internal pharmacy. We work with pharmaceuticals, really to drive the drug costs down. And then, we have our internal physicians. We really try to provide good quality of care. And we also have team-based care, really to talk about education, calling patient at home. Are you taking your brown pills? Are you weighing yourself? Are you gaining weight? Are you in heart failure? Really doing a lot of preventive care to, you know, prevent hospitalization, the ERs, which are the highest cost of, you know, expenses. So, really to take that into primary care, hopefully to save the system, overall system, money that way. So, I think we, we do that pretty well before the Obamacare, but we'll continue to get better afterwards.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, folks, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Okay, tonight, for folks that's left in the audience and for those folks at home, this was an interview with potential developers who've taken part in the RFQ process that we put out in March. So, tonight, I wanna thank staff for facilitating this and putting this together. And my colleagues also for participating as well. So, with that being said, I'll turn it over to Ms. Martell, and you can provide us the, the next steps as to where we go from here, please.
So, the next step is for the council to have some time to deliberate what you've heard tonight, to raise whatever issues you might have, to inquire of staff and our consultants, issues that you think about after tonight, that, about each of the projects. That particular session will occur within the next couple of weeks, on a date to be determined. It will be a special meeting, and it will be a closed session where you have that discussion because it obviously relates to property negotiations and that kind of thing, moving forward, and the direction that you will give to me and to the staff on how to pursue, if you have a, a sense of who you would like to see selected, you may decide, as we discussed earlier this evening, that you perhaps want to cast the net wider and consider other options that might be available for any of the sites. All that conversation, because it relates to what potentially we would be negotiating, will be held in closed session. When and if you come up with some direction, that will be announced in, in open session. And the, those who may be the success, successful developers will be notified. And then, we would be given direction to commence property negotiations with them and, and enter into exclusive negotiating agreement discussions. We will have the benefit of our consultant working with the staff and myself on this. And if the council decides that, as we mentioned earlier, you would like to broaden the potential proposers, then we would discuss with you at that time what that would require and the timelines potentially and, and the like.
Mr. Rea?
Yes.
So, let, let me just start by saying, I, I was very impressed by really everyone that came forward today. I thought their presentations were wonderful. I thought the council asked some really insightful questions. So, I'm gonna need some time to deliberate. That's number one. But I think more importantly, I, I think we need to have some opportunity for the public to weigh in on the decision as well. Now, I understand. Now, I understand Ms. Martel was talking about a closed session and, and I think we can get to a closed session and make the decision, but there should be an intervening moment before that where I think the public should give their, their, their way in on, on what, what they thought should happen to their city and, you know, I, I recognize we as a governing body will make that decision, but I, I do think some public input is needed and warranted, that's my thought.
If I might respond to that comment, we would not disagree with that. The decision has to be made in an open public setting and there would be an opportunity for the public to weigh in and also to be present to hear the council express in an open setting why they would prefer to select one developer over another, the rationale that you've applied and that kind of thing. So certainly all of that would, would occur in public and if the council wishes to have an open public meeting before they make a decision, that certainly, you can do that. The specifics related to issues that might end up being part of negotiations is the piece that we're concerned about and why we would have those kinds of conversations in a closed session setting. And I believe that our consultant wanted to add something, go ahead, Ken.
I just wanted to add that in the process, again, is, is your decision, but another step I think that is important in terms of evaluating the selection is making sure that we get a written proposal from the party, or parties that you believe are the most qualified. So at least in this process, we have to also remember, especially with respect to any closed session negotiations, because those are sensitive topics and discussions about, what does that financial proposal, you know, in terms of purchase, terms, conditions, you have a sense that many folks have the ability to finance, but what, what does that really say in writing, what's the timing and, and the conditions to close, if you will? So those further details, we, we think is an important next step. You may say, I want proposals from everybody, or again, to your point, I like developer A and I'd like to get a proposal from them and there's really a further evaluation and then how the public responds to that process, I think is obviously an important consideration.
Very briefly.
Mine's gonna be briefer than yours, because it's actually a compliment to you, Mr. Gangona. And, and the issue of the first one, Mr. Gangona says they're the only ones, so I mean, why belabor the process not unless any one of my council members want?
Not belabor.
You know, it's just my thought.
Whatever we know.
Right. Go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, I wanted to comment on the, on the selection process. Having been through this process a number of times on a number of very large projects, I, I think that the, the procedure of going forth and, and doing this general determination as to whether or not, and accepting those first requests for proposal, I think is important. The vetting process that we're doing publicly today is important. I think precisely for the point that you brought up, sir, about the, the details, the, 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 the details that go into the decision as to whether or not they're gonna come forth, if there are things about the project specifically that we have concerns about that we can have them come forth and then vet one more time before it gets to the public. I, I understand the, the, the rationale behind wanting the public involved at a certain point in this process and I totally agree with it, but I caution involving the public at too early, because we still have to get through the vetting process, you know, things that they consider are things that we may not even wanna even consider. So I think that while I take Mr. Wood's comments to heart as it relates to that, and I totally agree with it, I think that prior to taking it to the public, that we should be doing a little bit more in the way of truly vetting. I mean, I don't think they should be part of our vetting process. I think we have a different set of criteria that we're using to determine whether or not a project is suitable, something that's a little bit different than what the community thinks. And I think we can reconcile both of those things, but they have to be done on separate tracks.
Ms. Christensen.
I would propose that we have a closed session for us to have the discussion about what it is that we heard tonight and what our feelings are and, and what looks good, what doesn't look good, if we need more information. That's not a decision, there's no decisions in those. And then from that session, there would be and probably another closed session at a later date if we, and, and in between that time, once we have our little discussion and get more questions out, maybe request more information, blah de blah de blah, all that, that someplace in there is where the, the public would weigh in. But I think step one is we should have a conversation to just make sure that we're all, you know, everybody understands what happened here in a different way. I may have missed something and you may have caught something.
I don't understand the point in having that a closed session. That's my point, I mean, I think.
Legally, if you're talking about the finances, it has to be.
But you, but that's what I'm saying, I don't think we were talking necessarily about the finances, I'm just talking about ideas and what the public wants. What Ms. Martel was referring to when she mentioned the idea of a closed session, I got the part about there might be some intricacies and some nuances in terms of suitability or, or having the, the right financials and things like that. I can understand that being a closed session, but in terms of the overall concept, I just, I believe the, the community needs to be involved in that and that shouldn't be closed. If, because there's nothing closed about it, is what I mean. That, that's just my point, I, I.
So I think have a closed one first and, and so that we can get information that we need and, and then have a general open situation where what we've learned can be then explained to the public and we can get their input on specific things.
And if, if I'm wrong, if there are certain things about these projects and proposals that one or a few of us just cannot pal, is unpalatable to, palatable to us, then why bring it forward to the public when it, when it would, you'd never get any support for it? Why would you put it forth and go, all right, you guys, discuss it all you want, but there's no way I'll ever support it? I mean, I would much rather put forth things to the public that I would really seriously consider rather than, than not.
Let's take for exa, exist, example, the issue up at sixty-four oh one Mission Street. Here we got two different projects. One's a medical facility, a clinic, and one is a proposal for residential. That's, we're not comparing apples to apples in that case, but in the case of the hotels, it's kinda like apples to apples, but we have to get into the fine details as to, you know, a hotel is coming there and it's just a matter of picking which one, but at sixty-four hundred Mission Street, we're talking about two different projects and I think that would be great for, at least to hear from the public as to their thoughts and their feelings about it too. So hopefully, Ms. Martel and staff, you understand our concerns and we can come to some sort of, as we move forward, closed session, study session, but transparency to the public and at least informing them and giving them an opportunity to speak, I think it's very important. Okay? Sound good?
I think we can do both.
Hopefully, yes.
Yeah, we most certainly can do both.
Thank you, Ms. Martel, thank you so much. All right? Anything further?
No.
All right, this meeting is now adjourned, thank you very much.
I can't believe it, look at the clock, we're only two minutes over.
Well, I, I wanna go back upstairs and get that pizza.
It's not eleven o'clock.
I need you to sign these. So, somebody give me these papers.
And then you want me to give them back to you?
The ones with the little.